I am going to call the State Session of Littleton City Council to order. All of council is present tonight. Uh, we got three items on the agenda tonight. First up, we have a update from Arapahoe County about their services and budget. Um, also, we have our capital improvement sales taxes and board update. And then finally, we'll end with safer streets and initiative update. But to start off, we have Commissioner Kerry Warren Gully and Chris Hennig with Arapahoe County to come and give us the second state of the city or state of the county update here. Um, but no, it's great to have you here. And I know counties and cities have a good relationship and want to, you know, share information and work back and forth with each other. And we want to hear about what you guys got cooking.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I want to, I want to thank you for the time this evening. I know you have a very busy evening and um, a busy docket. So I appreciate the opportunity. Hope you all are off to a good start of your summer. Um, and um, you know, we're here to talk about everybody's favorite thing to talk about is uh, property taxes and budgets. So um, I'll just start off.
Go for the Tabor.
Yes, and Tabor. I, I wasn't going to bring that up yet, but since you said it, we will. So um, basically, we're going to kind of go through an outline here of just talking about the bottom line, what's kind of going on with our budget, what different options that we have as a county in order to do something about it. We've done a lot of polling and outreach to our community. So uh, share with you some of our research findings and um, let you know who we've kind of been out in community having conversation with. And I'd like to end, um, hopefully in time for us to have five or 10 minutes of, of conversation and questions that you all might have. So um, we'll start with the bottom line. You know, basically, uh, the state of the county's um, budget is a concern of ours. It has been a concern of the county for quite a while. Um, for really the past 25 years, we've had a lot of difficulty keeping up with the growth and the demand on that, that we have considering the revenue budget that we, that we receive every year. We are about 316 million already in the hole and behind in deficit of keeping up with our maintenance and transportation projects. And as you know, many of us have had the opportunity of working with a lot of federal one-time dollars right now, uh, through the ARPA Act and CARES dollars. And I'm very proud of the fact that the, that the county really did a lot of sharing of those dollars, uh, with our city partners and also out in community in a lot of different ways. And we were very purposeful about trying to keep that very focused on one-time things, you know, capital construction, whatever that looks like. We did take advantage of some of those dollars to try a couple of different pilot programs, but we really based those on a grant process. So we did not hire full-time people on our staff. We hired them through a grant process so that we could try that. And one of those is our housing navigators. And so you're going to, um, I'm sure you already have heard of them. Uh, we have them out in community and they actually are housed out of Bemis Library. God bless you. Um, uh, working with residents in community, which is really what we wanted to do. Instead of having people have to go to the website, to our buildings, we were trying to be in community to help people as we were coming out of the pandemic. And really, the, those, those housing navigators and um, the work that we've done around that are, are just a very small part of the types of things that we're concerned about not being able to continue.
That's a big one for me when we think about preventing homelessness.
Yeah.
Those housing navigators, they are the ones that are helping bridge that gap, um, finding alternative house, places for people to go, people who are couch-serving, who are already high vulnerable. For that, so that is a very critical function.
Yes.
Think of the homeless, homelessness issue.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, Councilwoman. It's very true. And that really is the goal of all of our human services work. A lot of it is to, to really help vulnerable populations. Um, without any new revenue, uh, coming in, in, in 2025, the county is very aware that we will have to make cuts. And um, these are just a couple of our larger departments in Arapahoe County and the types of cuts that we might potentially have to make. So what do those impacts look like? Next slide, please. Um, really, directly or indirectly, we pretty much touch every resident that resides in Arapahoe County. Currently, that's 655, 56,000 people, which is a very large county. We're the third largest in the, in, in the state. And by 2030, they're recommending, or they're, they're projecting that we will be the most populous county in the state. So we will only see higher numbers of people, higher demand on services as we deal with this population growth. So as you can see, these are the types of things that we provide in the community. Um, I know that you all are very aware of the types of things that we provide alongside you. Obviously, cities do a lot of work in, in your municipalities. And uh, the county really comes alongside to provide additional services. Most importantly, we provide a lot of the uh, safety net programs that we have, as well as our detention center, courts and such like that. Um, let's see, is there anything else? Well, I think we'll go on to the next slide, Chris. The county um, really relies almost exclusively on property tax. And um, the problem that we face is, is that when everybody writes out, which a lot of people did recently, your check to the county for property taxes, they are making the assumption that all of that money is going to Arapahoe County. And it does go to the Arapahoe County Treasurer. But we have 500 different taxing entities that we distribute funds to. So that's everything from your school district, which is probably one of the largest parts of your property tax. But it also um, goes all, you, you know, Sasa Urban Parks and Rec, water districts, stormwater districts, um, every kind of, of district you can think of, library districts. It is a, um, we, as I said, we have about 500 of them in Arapahoe County. And some of them are just teeny, teeny, tiny little water districts that maybe serve about 400 homes. So it's everything in that full range. And you'll see that um, from this graphic, that we only keep approximately 179 doll, uh, 179 dollars uh, per residential property. And uh, that means that for a home, someone asked me why 500,000 we chose. It's about the average price of a home in Arapahoe County. That's about $32 a month for all of the services that we provide as a county. Next slide. So what are our options? Let's take a look at those. Uh, as I said, really, the county is um, almost exclusively funded by, in the general fund by property tax. And currently, Arapahoe County is very unique. We're one of only about five or six counties in the whole state that have not gotten out from under the constraints of Tabor, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. So we are um, one of those county that is still constrained. And that only allows us to grow by a certain percentage each year. And um, we are finding that that doesn't allow us to keep up with all the inflationary measures and the growth that we've been talking about. So for example, this year, we were supposed to collect about 15.8 mils worth of property tax. And uh, we only collected 11.2. So that means that we were not able to collect and utilize 74 million dollars this year. And so that is one of the options that we potentially have to work with. The other lever that we have for new revenue is a sales tax. And Arapahoe County is also very unique in the state in that we only have one sales tax, a quarter of a cent, and that goes directly to open spaces. So that is not fungible dollars that we can utilize for whatever needs we have. It's very specific. And as a matter of fact, 50% of it comes off right at the top to share with our municipalities on their parks and, and open spaces. So if we were to add an additional 0.25% sales tax, that would uh, bring in about 45 million dollars every year. The third option that we have is to do nothing, which would mean that we would face cuts to our essential services. And um, we are most concerned about that as, as a Board of County Commissioners. And a lot of our fellow community members are, feel the same way about that. But it's important for you to realize that we haven't made any decisions yet. These are just the options that we have as a county in order to receive new funding above and beyond what we already have. So that means for 2025, we are only expecting on a 250 million dollar uh, general fund budget, an increase of about 7 million. And when you look at that and you think of the infrastructure, the transportation, uh, transportation, all of the things that we need to do as a county, as well as, as you all know, the ability to keep up with retaining and recruiting, uh, the very best that we can for our organization to care for our community. It is very difficult for us to keep up with that, with this 7 million dollars. Uh, so really, um, is where we're running into that. We also have some additional issues that are going on recently in our budget that we were not um, necessarily planning for. As many of you might remember, uh, we had the breakup of tri-county health, uh, two years ago. And we needed to stand up within one year, our own public health department. And of course, part of the reason that we were three counties having tri-county health was because it would bring in additional funding, or not additional funding, but it would bring efficiencies to the work that we do because we would, we would be sharing it across all three counties. Because of the fact that we um, became a single county, that was an additional cost of 3 million dollars every year for um, Arapahoe County. And this year, we are seeing a similar uh, split with our judicial district. So we will no longer have a four-county judicial district. At the end of this year, we will move to a single 18th judicial district and that will only be Arapahoe County. And we're estimating between 3 and 4 million dollars of additional spending to um, to get rid of those efficiencies. As many of you know, every time we um, have a legislative action that happens at the state legislature, that many times has an impact on our budget as well that we're not planning for through unfunded mandates. And lastly, just a lot of concern, as I'm sure you all are as well, of what's going to be happening in the next season here, uh, after November with potential ballot initiatives that could be passing. So there's a lot of uncertainty in our budget and we're really concerned about being able to stabilize this and have it be sustainable. A lot of times, people will ask me, well, what specifically does this mean for Littleton or whatever city um, we're in as I'm talking to folks? These are the kinds of, of impacts that we would see directly to the city of Littleton. Um, a lot of the work that we are doing along the South Santa Fe Corridor, we do in partnership with each other, not only the planning together, but also contributing of funds to make those projects happen. Uh, we would probably not have the resources to be involved in the planning nor the funding of those, as well as um, our inability to keep up with any type of um, of uh, co-payments. It's not what it's called. I'm losing the, the thought of, you know, we have to contribute 20% match to a federal um, project. Our human services department, on any given day, will support about 54 cases in the city of Littleton, with more than 5,600 cases of food insecurity and childcare assistance that we provide through our human services and WIC department. The sheriff's office would have to reduce positions. Um, and I know that you all have your own police department, but we do have a lot of services that we provide a lot, across the county through our co-responders, through our investigators. Um, we do a lot of community engagement, as well as specialty programs like our bomb threat program and our SWAT programs. And really, we, we support a lot of nonprofits and economic development partners in our communities through our aid to agencies program, as well as our economic development groups. And those dollars, especially because they are not a mandated or required service, those fundings would go away. So um, nonprofit partners that we support in this area are folks like Interconnected Family Services, um, some of the work that Bridge House is going to be doing in the Tri-Cities area. So those are the types of things that I'm concerned about losing as well. So when we talk about the public outreach and input that we're receiving, we did do a polling and survey, uh, at the beginning of the year. And you can see that, you know, not very, about half of the people know what a county does. And that's, that's not unusual. A lot of times, people say, well, what exactly does a county commissioner do? Um, they know a lot of what you all do. And they know a lot of what their school board does, but they really find the county um, a little bit nebulous and, and not really sure what we do. Um, and, and the struggle that we have is, is that most people think, well, there's no problem here. You're, you're doing just fine. However, we did find that the top three priorities are really where we tend to focus our funding. Um, that's through our sheriff's department, um, and uh, crime and public safety, road improvements and infrastructure, and then of course, all the work that we do to support vulnerable populations, affordable housing and homelessness programs. We did see a, a slight uh, preference for sales tax versus um, talking about the Tabor issue. Um, and I will let you know that we are back out in the community having another poll. And we are hoping that that changes, um, as we are out educating people. Because um, I'm sure you all will let me know and have already let me know that it would be very difficult to um, see us going after that sales tax because it takes away a little bit of your flexibility to do so. Next slide, please.
Actually, quick question on that last slide.
Yes.
With the uh, the bruising question on the survey, is that how, how are you asking that? Is the, the way you phrase it is very important. That right there comes across really antagonistic for Tabor, which I would definitely want to see it phrased a different way.
Well, yeah, so.
I know this is just a part of my, you know, that's.
Yeah, this is just, um, actually, that's what we're testing right now is kind of, how do you phrase that question? And are people, do people understand it better, a different way that it's phrased or those types of things? So.
That phrase without raising taxes is important.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because the other one doesn't have that phrase.
That's right, that's right. No, it um, it is, I think, where people run into the problem is trying to figure out or understand it. And I will say, Mayor, that part of the issue that I find in, in being in community is they conflate our issue with what's happening at the state level. So a lot of times, people will say to me, well, does that mean I'm not going to get my check anymore? And we're like, and I'm like, no, that's the state. And uh, one year, they did refund you a check and another, this year, they gave you a credit on your income tax. Um, but the county actually does not collect everything that it can because we don't want to do a check back or a credit or anything like that. So we temporarily lower people's mill levy so that we don't collect everything and have to rebate. So we try to tackle that on the front end, which is very positive because it's more efficient. It's a little bit negative because most people don't know that we actually lowered their mill levy rate by four mils this year. Um, so that's, that's a difficulty in talking about that particular issue.
Mayor, we have asked four different versions of the debruising on our June polling, so we should have those results in the next week or so.
Yeah. We, it's not lost on us, so thank you for.
Is it the potential ballot language? All four different versions of potential ballot language?
Yeah. So this is our, our challenge is, you know, people are, I, the good thing is people are satisfied. The bad thing is people don't recognize that there's an issue going on here. And I, I do try to really make sure that it's very apparent. We're not talking about new and innovative and exciting programs. Uh, we're not talking about building new buildings. We're not talking about building uh, new transportation corridors. We are talking about sustaining the essential services that we currently provide. And that too is a difficult message because it's not very um, exciting and, and sexy. But uh, it is very important um, to being able to provide these. We do have a great website and um, it's at acbudget.com. There's uh, the ability to go in and just kind of get, oh, here's the general overall view of what's going on and what the question is about. And then we also have a lot more information that goes very in-depth on um, the budget and the types of things that we spend our, our funding on. And we also have an interactive budget tool where people can direct funding, where they think it would be most needed. And we also have an interactive tool where people can see what would be the impact to my um, situation with the value of my home versus just having that, you know, 500,000 dollar price out there. So we're really trying to get out into community. We are meeting with lots and lots of groups, not only our city councils, but Rotary Clubs, we're, we're Lions Clubs, we're going to um, all of our nonprofit partners, our chambers. We're really trying to be in community and anybody who asks us, um, we're trying to uh, be in front of so that they get a better understanding of the issues and um, have a better understanding themselves. So that's our presentation for this evening and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have for follow-up.
Council, any questions or concerns?
Kerry, you mentioned you touched everybody every day, 650,000 people. Expand on that a little bit. I, I don't see a lot from Arapahoe County. But which is that? Do you mean we're in the parks or we're doing?
Yes, I think that me, it means that, you know, if you're out enjoying trails and open space along the South Flat River, if you're driving in, in almost, you know, I mean, these expensive, these transportation projects are expensive. So we're all having to pitch in together. Um, we're providing a lot of services to our school districts. Um, so if you have children in school districts, whether they're receiving services or not, they are actually benefiting from the services because um, they're providing help to families and children that are in the classrooms right next to um, our children. So those are the types of services that we're talking about.
Okay, okay.
Just to recap, one of the arguments you're making is that you would have had to have done this four or five years ago if it weren't for ARPA?
Well, that's part of it.
I just wanted to make sure I heard clearly.
Yes.
I'm not being.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, ARPA allowed us to postpone it.
Okay.
A little bit. And I, I am actually thankful for that because this would have been a very hard conversation to have during a pandemic when people are really trying to recover and such. But um, and to be honest, this is not new to the county. I mean, even five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, we recognized that these issues were, were happening. And um, I will say that, that this current board has been very proactive about trying to solve for this solution.
And the, on the different languages that you're trying, is any of the languages you're trying to um, include some sort of option to, while property tax rates won't go up, essentially property tax bills will go up. Are you talking, are you considering anything where it's a, more of a gradual increase over time or is that not part of the conversation?
We have talked about that and at this point, we, the, that hasn't been entertained. I think it's, it's kind of, we need to debruise or not. Um, I will say that um, I'm not even sure how long ago. It might, it might have been close to 20 years ago that the uh, community did vote to debruise all federal and state dollars that come into our budget. Our, our total budget is 500 million, but that's 250 million that we receive from federal funds for our human services. for our human services departments, our court systems, whatever, all those funds and state dollars as well. So those have been debruised. We're only talking about the general fund, which is supported by the property tax.
Great. I definitely feel like you do provide valuable services and an important part of the community. And I, I appreciate you trying to get yourself on firm financial footing. Obviously, as we've talked about before, I, I hope you go for the debruising component versus the sales tax.
Thank you. I'll take that input.
Are you, when are you going to make a decision? And am I correct that if it's either one of the taxes, it has got voters?
Correct.
And you pick one?
Correct.
Okay.
That's right, Council.
Unless, okay, so what is kind of the decision, the time?
So we're looking the end of July or August. As I said, we're really trying to take a look at this polling and see what we find out as well as just trying to be in community so that people are aware of it before we make a decision and gather, we're trying to gather input to see what people feel more comfortable. We would just put one on the ballot, yeah.
And I agree with.
Councilwoman Reichardt. All right.
To me, building coalitions.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
All right.
Just how else can we be supportive? Like us working on our ideas and, you know, bringing up to voters and stuff like that. But what else do you think?
Well, I would say if people have, I, I mean, part of the reason of being at, being here this evening is, is that if you start receiving questions, if you haven't already, you have a, have a way to, to, to focus people and to help them find out more information. So our website is a great start. Certainly, I am happy to talk with anybody if you want to give them my phone number or to reach out to the county to, to ask our finance team questions that they might have. You know, I, I would say that when you're in community and talking about the partnership that we have, it's important for them to recognize that cities and counties work a lot together and that we don't provide the same services. That, that if we, you know, if some of these services go away, nobody's going to be providing them. So the city's not going to have the financial means to pick that up. So, and, you know, clearly, we would love your support and partnership and working to educate our community once we make a decision. So we will be keeping you posted on that.
Not necessarily a question for you, but maybe for my colleagues. So just thinking about the fall ballot, if you guys are on the ballot asking for a change, taxation change, what other changes do we expect voters in our community to be? And we have our own decisions to make, so not our own, if we make it, but what other?
It's going to be a busy ballot.
Yes, it is.
Because RTD is probably going to be on there?
Most likely.
Actually, to follow on with that, have you talked with the other municipalities to see what, you know, they're doing in terms of sales versus property taxes? Because I honestly don't have a good landscape view of what other meetings are doing.
You have a far better that, Chris, more than I do.
I think everyone's going to wait and see. They're kind of like us. We've heard rumblings from, from a couple of different cities that we're thinking about doing it. But I think much like us, they're going to wait as they get closer to fall, go make a decision, so.
I haven't heard any specific in Arapahoe County necessarily, but.
I haven't either, and that's why I'm curious.
I haven't heard any specific in Arapahoe County that they're moving towards something, but you never know.
I will say that Aurora, from our understanding, Aurora and Cherry Creek Schools are going to be going for rather large bonds, at least. Littleton Public Schools, as far as I know, is not going for anything at this point. But it will be a very busy ballot and it's going to, there's a lot of conversation. And that's really where we would probably need your help the most is to really help hone people into this is our community, these are the needs that we have versus, you know, this is the state doing something where it's going to be all over the place. It's quite an interesting year.
Mayor, anything else?
Yeah, well, first off, we'll, I'll back you either way. Whether it be property or sales, whatever you end up going with, the cost of inaction of doing nothing only is going to dramatically compound the problem based on the inflation and quite honestly, the knock on effects of the deferred maintenance on some of our cross-regional transportation systems, fleet management, everything like that. You'll see, we will all see service levels decline rapidly. And those costs will increase rapidly. So we'll be getting hit two ways from Sunday. So, you know, you've got, at least got my support, whichever you decide. However, I, as I have made a case to you before, and I'll, I'll say it here again, because, you know, our voters did, you know, approve us for our 3A sales tax increase for our own infrastructure needs, for which, you know, we are primarily responsible. It is a much easier case for me to make to my constituents with regards to a property tax increase. Whoa, sorry, with regards to debruising. And I'm not going to do that if I were to go out on a party, debruising.
Good practice, practice here.
But I mean, also, you know, in terms of the county's kind of fiscal sustainability into the future, that is the option that makes obvious sense for this, the magnitude of deferred maintenance on this infrastructure, the longevity of the assets, the potential for bonding, the stability of the revenue. A, a property mill solution is by far and away the right choice to make from a technical, financial perspective for this kind of investment. And I'd be happy to wave that flag proudly and carry that message forward and not say property mill increase. But, you know, I, it would be far and away an easier, you know, choice for us to be able to support the county in doing so in that regard. But to, to my earlier point, we'll, I'll back you either way.
Well, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that.
And I think our relationship with the municipality and the county is really important. And, you know, I know it may not be apparent, as you know, Councilman Driscoll mentioned, but you, I mean, the county really is involved in lots of things that happen to our residents and our community members. So it is important that you guys are, you know, funded appropriately and can do the services that you provide to everyone. I do have kind of three comments slash concerns. I think one of the, the first one is that, you know, this budget shortfall, you know, was apparent to the county for a number of years. And I think it's concerning that residents don't necessarily see it as a shortfall. So I think there's a communication gap that's been happening and, and needs to ramp up there about, about the shortfall that we have there. And I think when you look at the potential sales tax increase, while the polling numbers look a little bit better, I think some of the sentiment of some of the other municipalities, you know, I've heard, you know, flat out of opposing, that would be a hard campaign to, to, well, not run, but to, to watch happen there when partnerships are actually opposing you there. But with the revenue cap question there, when it's, you know, you have without raising taxes right there in the question is really important. But the fact that it's polling so low is, you know, those numbers, both of them don't look all that great. Not where you, not where you want them to be, but.
That's right.
It's, it's hard. And I think, you know, as most people would support the revenue cap question, if we can help get that message out of what it actually means and what it means to people and how beneficial, you know, we're looking at the revenue that would go towards, you know, the $35 million shortfall plus hopefully address some of the maintenance there. So, I mean, that looks like the best option if it had better poll numbers.
I'll say like, from a communications perspective, I think the city, you know, previous council did an excellent job at making the case for deferred maintenance on infrastructure and road improvements and stuff like that. And I, I think we saw pretty decisive support, you know, crossing many lines to, to make that happen. And I think the, the focus on responsibly taking care of the things that you have, you know, saying, we're not kicking the can down the road. You know, this makes technical and economic sense and we're not going to try to fear monger you into making a rash decision, but we're saying we're taking care of the things that we have. I think is, is a compelling, there's a compelling positive message for infrastructure funding there. And I think the city, our, you know, our city, not to toot our own horns, did a decent job at it this last go around. So.
And that was noted by other municipalities that had unsuccessful ballot initiatives that were similar. And it was, you know, with describing exactly what you want to use those revenues for. And I think that's really key to make sure that it's not like, oh, we just want it so we can do our services, but very specific of what.
Yeah, and I, I'll say that's probably one of the most challenging things because this is so broad. It, it is not specific to one thing, so it is really across our budget. And so that's part of the education of this is to really help people understand what we do do in community and, and help them see the importance and the value of that. And I, I'll just, I'll, I'll answer your question a little bit too, Mayor, about, you know, I think the county has really prided itself on being one of the lowest tax rate, mill levy tax rates in the state. They've prided themselves very much on efficiency and working and, and being very efficient. And, and that has served us well. Until you get to the point of where your growth has gotten so big, you are seeing more complex cases and more demand for services. And you have an inflation rate that I'm sure that you all are struggling with as well. This isn't a consumer inflation rate. This isn't going and buying a gallon of milk. This is paying health insurance, paying, you know, paying for a ton of asphalt. These are incleruses that are happening at a much higher rate. And Tabor constrains us to a commercial inflation rate. So it doesn't even keep up with the type of governmental inflation that we've been seeing. So it's just, it's, it's broad and it's complex. But I appreciate your willingness to kind of hear us out this evening and your willingness to support us and help us get that out to community. So anything we can do to help with that and/or any questions that you might have in the future, please let me know.
Don't want to speak for Counsel's role, but it sounds like there's sentiment that we want to, want to be able to support you here and move forward. We'll try our best to do that because, you know.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate it. And as always, I, I just, I, I love representing this area. I love representing the area where you all do such great work. And I, I greatly appreciate the partnership that we have. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Backed by gold dates.
Wait, wait, you did this for the, this isn't just a special, you know, at the board.
I've been doing this since I was 13. It's been part of my.
Snickers.
But you are special.
All right, so next up on the agenda, we have our capital improvement, sales taxes and board. No longer the cystic, but the cystable.
Neither one of them.
Neither one of them.
Pleasant to say.
So we, I'll let kind of Jim introduce. Tiffany, or do you want to introduce Tiffany into this board?
I will, okay.
Give a little context.
What are, what are?
All right, they're aboard.
They're aboard, yes.
So the first problem tonight. Welcome to our citizen board and thanks to our staff for, for facilitating their work. I'll just give the context for Counsel and the public that the city's sales tax measure 3A, as segued from the last item, passed about two and a half years ago. And I think our staff has done a good job and has realized the challenge of scaling up our program that had been such, at such a low funding level for so many years. You know, we've been able to use those funds to, to pledge matching funds for capital and also to build up our pavement management program. Lots of great work, but it is, it is taking some time to ramp up the program to the, the level that it will be at. And so this is the second year that our citizen board for this purpose has met. And their purpose is to really be that citizen check on the city's fidelity with the ballot language approved by voters with, with, with regard to measure 3A for capital and maintenance. So with that, I will turn it over to first to Tiffany and Brent, who can introduce the, the work. And then I know we want to hear from our committee, just your thoughts on how we're doing and that, you know, if we are remaining disciplined, our staff takes that seriously. We hope that the, that the board has found the same, so Tiffany.
Thank you. Good evening, Counsel. Before you is a discussion on a memo that is shared in your packet that comes from our capital improvement sales tax board members. First, I just want to introduce a couple of board members that we have here. We have John Jones, who is a citizen representative. And we have Julie Dulevich, who is also a citizen representative. The remainder of the board consists of a member from several different boards, such as South Metro Housing Auctions, the Transportation Master, or Transportation, oh my gosh. Mobility Board.
They're staring at you.
And also a number of other members of varying boards throughout the, the city. And really, what is the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Board? So when the citizens approved the 0.75% sales tax back in November of 2021, council wanted to establish a committee at the time, which is now a board, to provide some feedback to counsel on the purpose of the use of the funds and are we spending them in alignment with those ballot, with that ballot question? And the board is required to meet at least two times a year as a board. And so we met in April and in May and then present a memo to counsel, kind of summarizing what they saw as far as expenditures, some comments on revenues and any recommendations that the board might have to counsel related to either expenditures under the 3A funds or if there's any other comments that they would like to share. And so the memo is in your packet and hopefully you were able to take a peek at that. But really, there's just a few areas. There's the executive summary, how were the funds spent? Were there any expenditures that appear to be outside of the required ballot language? Any recommendations or concerns? And any additional comments that the board would like to share with counsel? And really, to summarize, and then we'll open it up for any comments or discussion that the board members would like to share. But we did review the balance sheet of 2023 and the income statement and even a detailed general ledger with the group and discussed the projects that were being worked on and the current and future funding of projects and the purpose of those projects. They based their review on this information and they do feel that the funds were spent in conformance with ballot language. And they also did review kind of the future plan of the RAY, which will be updating with counsel during the 2025 budget. But noted that the planned spending of the future funds are in conformance with the ballot language as well. So just kind of a summary of the projects that were spent and identified some future projects. And also, one thing that we did a little bit different this year is we have a lot of projects that are being spent with 3A money. And trying to track those and manage those is, is somewhat hard, especially from a citizen perspective. And so what I opted to do this year is really just kind of outline and detail each individual project. So that was included in your packet. That really just shows, you know, was this on Santa Fe and Minrol? Was this related to bicycle and pedestrian? Was this related to multimodal projects? So you will see those detailed projects listed. And I'm hoping it was helpful to kind of see those specific projects. I think the board appreciated seeing some of those and, and really diving into the detail, which we did a lot of during our few meetings. So, yeah, that was definitely something that we did a little bit different. We'll continue to try to enhance those.
When you say detail, it's the, is that the document with the blue table format?
Yes, correct. Yes, so, you know, I just want to say I appreciate the board's time and, and sitting with us and listening to us and, and hearing about the projects and having some great questions for Brent and myself during those meetings. And I'm really just interested in what is the city doing with the funds? And so I really appreciate all the time that the board spent on that during those meetings. But really, that's, that's all I wanted to kind of share. But I'd really like to open it up to the board to see if they want to share any specifics and share any additional information and if you have any questions.
Okay, well, thanks, Tiffany. I'll start it up. So this is both John and my second year on the committee. So it's kind of been a great, you know, it's been really great to see the start of year one and then also see some traction made gained for year two. And then also to see kind of what the plan is for the next 10 years. So as Tiffany mentioned, we had our first meeting in April, had a really robust discussion with both Tiffany and Brent to go through really kind of what, what funds came in, really where that's being spent, what some of the challenges are that are kind of causing some of the delay in some of the funds and kind of what the anticipation is for the next couple of years. So really great to see that. I think, you know, we had, as a citizen, you know, in your. we had a, as a citizen, you know, in your, in kind of your normal travels, you don't get to see a lot of the detail of what's happening behind the scenes. And so, uh, appreciate, uh, Tiffany and Brent for walking us through that. But I think we had a pretty robust conversation about all the different projects to make sure that, you know, as part of our, uh, charters, just to make sure that we understand what the funds are being spent on. And then most importantly, are they within the guidelines of the ballot language for three A? So, um, some of the highlights, uh, for this year, so during the year ended December 30th, 2023, there was about 12.4 million of funds raised, uh, that were three A funds. Um, during the year ended December 31st, 2023, about 5 million of those funds were spent. So we're starting to see some traction gain there. So the main categories where these funds were spent were about 2 million in street capital maintenance. We had, uh, about 200 K in conservation and grounds, half a million in internal services capital, about 1.6 in facilities capital maintenance, about 225 K starting in on the downtown streetscape design that's, um, kicking into gear, and then about 450 K for program personnel that are really the pro, the personnel that are really kind of managing these programs that are being primarily funded with three A. So, um, with that being said, as of the end of the year, December 31st, 2023, the three A fund has about 17.7 million of funds in it that are, um, slated to be used for projects here in the next, uh, year or two. As it relates to the ballot language, as we went through and understood what all the spending was for the projects, we didn't see or any issues of the funds being spent on projects that were outside the language, uh, in the ballot for three A. So no concerns there. And then, um, we didn't have any specific recommendations, uh, to the city about utilization of the three A fund, but we had some additional comments that we wanted to discuss with the, um, the, the group here that, uh, John will go ahead and hop into.
Yeah. So we've highlighted these in the proposal and, and Julie and I, as you mentioned, we've had this opportunity the last couple of years to meet with the staff and, and I, I would say best guess, we'd probably ask them at least 200 questions, you know, perhaps 200 each, each year. And there's a very consistent theme. They're all very happy to answer our questions. Uh, I've negotiated large agreements for companies all across the country for 20 years. I'm very comfortable putting someone on the hot seat and we've done that, you know, to, to these guys and stuff. And, and they just get better the more they share with you and the deeper they go. And it's just this very consistent theme, um, that I characterize as they're spending money like it's their own, that financial discipline and due diligence that they bring into what they do each day, you know? Very much appreciate that approach. When we look at, at, um, the funds and the gap in terms of the spending being below, you know, the, the plan, uh, one thing that stood out to me on that is how, uh, the matching funds, for example, on, on the federal side, you know, before, uh, coming into this, I did not realize the effort that goes into, you know, ensuring that we are able to, to get those funds matched in a way, you know, and I think the average citizen may not know, know that, you know, but a lot of great effort work goes into that to get the right fit versus, um, um, you know, I, I, I've had the perception at times that, that government spending is, is more about, um, spending it or losing it. And I know that that's not the case here as we've seen through, through these examples. When we look at the, the 24, uh, 2024 spending, the 340 million anticipated, you know, we highlight, you know, the different areas, the breakout. Uh, and then, you know, the, the staff has provided some visibility to the long-term spending, uh, you know, as noted in the, the memo there, there in, uh, you know, we very much thank them for, for everything that they provided to us. Um, one recommendation that we do note at the bottom there is, uh, for you to consider that a, uh, board position be added for the environmental stewardship board, uh, to the three A here. Um, one, one scenario I wanted to, to highlight is, is a personal scenario that I've found. About six months ago, there was a, a friend of mine who owns a business relatively close to actually where we sit right here. And he described the public works buildings and the project and, you know, what, what's going on there as the golden Taj Mahal that would be built, you know? And I asked Tiffany about this, like what's, what's going on there? You know, and this is someone that I thought was pretty, pretty close to what's going on. Um, and then she talks about, you know, the aging infrastructure and, you know, the safety concerns and all these things that are in nowhere related to anything that would be characterized as the golden Taj Mahal. But as she's explaining this to me, all I can think about is dump trucks being parked inside of a golden Taj Mahal. You know, I was like, we were so far off from what this individual, you know, was thinking in the reality of, of what's going on, what the real plan is. And I would imagine that the other, other citizens could easily get disconnected like that. I have a neighbor, a husband and wife, they have five boys. They went to 250 baseball games last year. They're probably not real close to everything that's going on right here. Similar with other families, uh, you know, throughout the community. The work that's being done regarding the, the project management solution, the dashboards, the one-pagers and all that thing, I think that's going to be real beneficial for the community. And as I've looked through the, the budget packet and stuff and, you know, we see those, it's, it's like really easy to follow and you can look through that and not spend all that much time and say, yeah, that makes sense. It makes perfect sense. There's no golden Taj Mahal being built, you know? It's the right thing for the community. All the, those things that we have the opportunity to see through these meetings that others don't, I would go to far, as far as say that like, if I handed my checkbook over to Tiffany, I would know it would be managed well, you know, that they're really on top of it, the financial discipline's there. And I'm confident as a citizen that, um, I have a lot of pride in the work that's being done, not by just the staff, but also by the city council, council, and, and a lot of confidence in the work's being done.
Does the group have any questions for us that we can answer?
So thank you very much for, um, your time and, and this information. I feel like it's really important to be able to communicate to the community that we have some, um, community eyes on the budget. Do you mind sharing with me some of your professional background so I can talk about the skills and knowledge that you brought to this review? Has, just, is that okay?
Sure. Yeah. Um, so I, I am an accountant, so I'm CPA, spent about 23 years working in public accounting, doing on the audit side, working primarily with the not-for-profit sector. So I'm very familiar with government grants, government spending, um, kind of what, that, you know, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, et cetera. Um, so I'm familiar with that. I currently work in, uh, industry right now as a controller for a general contractor. So, um, kind of as, as I approach it from a professional, I, I look at it from a professional, but then also a citizen too, uh, view. Um, you know, as a professional, you know, I know that there's a lot that goes into the tracking that Tiffany and her team have to do, especially with making sure like, you know, is everything being spent in the right bucket, uh, because there's a lot of oversight. Um, you know, they get looked at it from not only a, a regular annual financial audit, but their annual, uh, single audits going through too. So, you know, as it relates to me as a professional, I want to know, okay, you know, how much money's coming in and how much is going out. And so I think one of the big things we were looking at was, you know, you expect that money comes in, money goes out. But I think what I've noticed is, is there's been some very good planning on the part of the city to make sure that they're very intentional with the projects, um, that the money's being spent on. And obviously as a group, as council, you guys are driving that conversation. So, you know, that's kind of how I look at it. I'm, as a citizen, I'm pretty excited, you know? Um, this was a, a pretty big deal getting to this point of getting the three A passed. Um, I think it's a, as I see it, a big investment in the community and the city. And as John mentioned, you know, I really appreciate the communication you see on the website. Um, I think it's Big Things Littleton website, Littleton Report I love. So that's kind of how I approached it.
Thank you. I just think it's helped. I really appreciate the time and expertise you bring to this and it's just helpful for me if I'm talking to citizens about, well, we have this board that's reviewing it and being able to say that, well, you know, volunteers with, with professional background in, in finance are part of who's helping our community stay on top of it. So I appreciate your willingness to talk a little bit about your background.
You know, when I refer to the, uh, accounting piece, I typically say CFO next to me. I trust that she knows what she's doing because she's a real CFO. I've spent, um, as I mentioned a little bit, last 20 years working for small, medium large companies, uh, in supply chain management, uh, primarily on, um, uh, driving out cost, you know, and, and from a very aggressive standpoint. Um, I worked for Dish, which is an EchoStar company, large employer, and the community here, similar mindset there, you know? And, um, at all these companies I've worked for, it's with this cost savings point of view, it's not been necessarily taking the savings and driving it to the bottom line. It's about taking the savings and putting that in another area that creates multiplier effect and drives additional value. And I think the same thing applies here, you know, spending money in the right spots and investing in other areas, whether that be sustainability, uh, pedestrian safety, bicycle, all of those other things. Get the right deal here so you can afford to do the right things over there.
Thank you for your time and expertise. I would appreciate it. Might want to go talk to Raphael Kennedy.
I want to say thank you and thank you for the level of detail. The 200 questions gives me a sense of confidence. I mean, I'm sure everything is fine, but just to be able to talk to citizens in the community and have that oversight, I was one of the council members that was a real advocate to have as many citizens involved as possible. I mean, it's great. Our board members are very dedicated, but to have people that are just kind of outside and aren't kind of used to how the city works and the whole process. So thank you, and it gives me a sense of confidence when talking to others.
Yeah, more for Brett. You know, and I know you came into the game here late Brett, but only spend 1.9 million dollars on roads, kind of a, a low number in my mind. And I, I look here why things didn't get done in 20, you know, in 2023 was not due to a combination of continued planning and various projects. When I think of road, I think mill overlay. I don't think of a lot of project planning that goes in that. I think it's an RFP that goes out to five or six different companies and we, we get it done. You know, now if we have to do curb and gutter, that's a different deal. But mill overlay, I would think, like in my neighborhood, huge mill overlay needed, curb and gutter is looking good. So, um, I'm just wondering, you know, is it that big of a deal for, for managing that?
Well, so what the, how we manage that is, um, what they did is they went and they hired a company to do, um, pavement management index for all the streets within the city. And so based upon the condition, um, uh, the engineering group actually came up with a 10-year plan.
Right.
So that's, that's all the planning that goes behind that.
Yeah.
And so the 1.9 last year, I think we really want to spend more money this year. You know, so we, we did the Aberdeen stuff earlier this year. We just brought the, um, large mill and overlay contract to the last council meeting, which I believe was another 2 million. So I think we'll be pushing 4 million this year. Um, I think Jim had a good point when he, um, started the conversation was we're trying to ramp up to get all these projects done. And I, I feel like as we continue to go, that we're going to be spending more money.
Yeah, I mean, we have, I mean, that's where the money's raised for. My, my only thought is, let's go. Let's go while we can still afford it. Let's, you know, every year it seems like we're ticking up another two, three, five percent, uh, not only in labor but material. Um, and so, um, yeah, just, just.
Sure.
Would love to see it ramped up.
Yeah.
On, on those types of projects. I get the buildings and stuff like that. That takes time to, you know, get your architectural designs, everything approved and all that. But talking about mill overlay, it seems to me pretty, pretty straightforward as long as we don't have to rebuild the road.
Yeah. And I think, um, just to add a little bit to that, um, so that, that kind of, that category, if I remember correctly, we have at least eight million in total planned.
It says eight right here. I was looking at.
In 2024. And then we also have a portion of street, uh, uh, maintenance that's paid out of our other capital projects funds. So, um, it's related to each U T F funds. And then, um, uh, I think a little bit more than that. So multiple funding sources that kind of impact the street maintenance piece of it. This is, is, is a part of it. Um, there's a little bit elsewhere too. So just to kind of put it in.
Yeah. And I think you'll see that we're, be spending more and more money every year.
Yeah.
I think that's just what, you know, we have told the citizens and that's, I think they're just trying to live up to our end of the bargain.
Any other questions or comments from council? Maybe Raphael Kennedy can use the citizen oversight. They're from the ballot language.
Patrick said that a little bit ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
For allowing us to do it.
Nice job.
Thank you guys. Much appreciated.
I'm still here. I'm staying.
We might want to consider.
This is safer street. Mr. Mayor, could we take a five minute, next, you know, okay?
Sure, we'll take a.
Sorry.
Five minute break.
You might take that long transition to.
Is that okay?
We'll take a five minute break, recess.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much.
All right, so we're back for our third topic for tonight is our Safer Streets Littleton program. So, we've got a whole plethora of people joining us here. Uh, I'll let the Jim introduce at least a couple of you.
Thanks.
And I introduce the topic.
Yeah, so one of the themes of this update, you know, really is the cross-departmental effort that it's been. It really is fun and I will say I'm really proud to see the group that's, that's here tonight because the folks, the staff that you have here tonight, the transportation mobility board members that are here tonight really, really, really represent just the initiative and the shift change that happened several months ago toward this, this effort. This has been, you know, probably top priority. It has been top priority for these folks for the last few months. Four months ago, staff gave, or council gave staff some very specific direction and mandate to embrace and really move along with the council and community priority for safer streets, for more bicycle and pedestrian safety. And you'll hear tonight where we are with that. We have projects and communication going on all fronts, as you'll, as you'll hear, and it really has been an effort from many, many departments. So, I'll just start with some introductions. We have Brent Soderland, our interim director of Public Works Utilities. Kenneth Davis, who I do want to give some special attention. She's really, in terms of coordinating all of this and putting this presentation together night, or tonight, has really been at the heart of it. She, Kenneth is our transportation planner. Shane Roberts is our senior transportation planner. Aaron Hume is our transportation engineering manager. Brent Thompson is our city engineer. David Gilbert is our senior media strategist. Shira Pullman is our public information officer. And then that guy in the back, our police chief, Doug Stevens, has, has been all part of this too. So, you'll hear from all of them tonight. And I do also want to recognize the transportation mobility board members that are here and have really had this, this topic as a major focus for the last several months and they're building toward even more connection with the city council as we build even more momentum over the summer until to really new levels for, for this initiative. So, with that, and I will say at the risk of some over exposure for Around Town with Jim, the staff did bring a new video that's, that's being released today. Again, I'm very proud of our staff's work. This, while, you know, I'm part of it, it really is David Gilbert and Tyler Barton. In this case, Kenneth Davis carried so much of the content, so credit to her. And I think it is kind of a fun way to start, just to share this message that's going out to the community. If not, is it today, David? You are here at the world premiere.
World premiere.
I must have missed the red carpet when we walked in.
Exactly. Our, our names and lights. So, we'll start with that and then we'll get into some of the update at a, at a more detailed level.
Drive another video.
You know.
I agree.
Hi, I'm Littleton City Manager Jim Becklinburg. And this is Around Town with Jim. Everyone has the right to get around safely. That's why the city of Littleton is working hard to make this one of the best cities in the country to get around on foot or bike. It's an effort called Safer Streets Littleton. It's a campaign to improve pedestrian and bicyclist safety.
You could narrate it.
I could.
You have your script, you remember it?
Really? Yeah. Narrate it, Jim. David writes good stuff on a piece of paper and I read it, so it's.
We'll just pretend it was all brilliant.
Text to our phones. Well, I know that Kim will.
Try one more time.
Keep working.
Hi, I'm Littleton City Manager Jim Becklinburg. This is Around Town with Jim. Everyone has the right to get around safely. That's why the city of Littleton is working hard to make this one of the best cities in the country to get around on foot or bike. It's an effort called Safer Streets Littleton. It's a campaign to improve pedestrian and bicyclist safety through accelerated infrastructure projects as well as increased police enforcement and driver education. Today, Kenneth Davis, Littleton's transportation planner, will tell us how this vision is coming to life.
Let me take this moment to say that we'll be spending some of the next four weeks when we don't have council meetings, the communications team and the IT team will be doing work in this council chambers to hopefully update some of the decade or more old AV backbone software and also work on some of the sound and the speakers in this, this room. So, that'll be worth, that's work happening over the next month.
Well, decades, it's only been done three years ago.
We didn't update the equipment though.
Yeah, it was working earlier, but I can try plugging in something else to get it up on the screens if you want.
Why don't, if you want to work on that, we might come back to this if there's time at, at the end.
It'll take this computer.
It'll be a good appetizer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they probably, let's move, move forward without the video.
Was it, was her computer audible through the broadcast at all?
Um, not, the computer's not, but I have this loaded up in one of the studio.
Is it, is it like a minute?
But, um, I just need to plug in, let's try this. Let's just go ahead and do it real quick.
Doug, we're gonna have to do some overtime this weekend and get our production ramped up.
Let me try this.
What? I don't do good this right now.
Chief breaking his hip. Skip that. It's funny. It's like a school rep. Mm-hmm.
Stuck in.
I wish it was in the interview.
I'd like to stay over here.
Don't we take some time? What, why is it like that? It's done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Just get in the day before, should I do 950, 945? And I clicked on one and didn't know where it came. I guess we're all great now. At 21. We moved on there. And so I got it. I figure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got it, I got it. And I thought.
He's almost out of snacks.
Just like Southwest.
Right, right.
I meant some too.
I was, I went and picked up my kit from college this weekend. So, no longer. And.
Yeah, my apologies, folks. This is not working. All right.
Thank you for trying. Thanks for trying.
Yeah, I usually hate it.
I do too, usually.
Maybe send us a special email with the link.
Yeah, that's good.
Put it on a loop on.
There we go. You guys are all very sad that we can't watch the videos.
Yeah, we can just go out and lobby and watch it.
Did it work?
No, it didn't get it working so.
Okay.
Just to continue with the presentation.
All right, well, I will kick it off again, so.
As loud as we can, please, for the audience.
Speak louder.
Sure. My name's Brent Soderland, the interim director of Public Works and Utilities. So, I'll kick it off again. So, I guess you can tell by the number of people we have here that it really took a lot of teamwork to get this Safer Streets initiatives up and going. So, I guess we go to the next slide. So, just as an overview, tonight, we're going to be doing an overview of all the programs that we're doing, the status of our Safer Streets Littleton initiatives, some information that was shared with the transportation and mobility board, and then our next steps. And I believe Brent Thompson has the next few slides.
I do. Brent Thompson, city engineer. All right, next slide. As staff undertakes capital improvement projects, we undertake, we look at projects holistically. We don't look just at, at the pavement or the transportation system or the utilities. We'll look at all of it comprehensively. Look at projects as an opportunity to implement bicycle and pedestrian improvements wherever possible. So, looking at project implementation process, I should say, it's really important that we go through, through all four steps of planning, leading into design, then construction, and then maintaining those, the, the infrastructure that's been installed. It's really critical that each of these steps is part of the process. It's crucial to the long-term viability of the improvement. Of course, overarching elements that we look at when we're undertaking any projects of, you know, funding naturally, but then equipment and staff limitations in order to maintain the infrastructure long-term. And for implementation of projects, we undertake, we use internal staff and we use consultants for support as well. So, looking at some of the, the goals of the Safer Streets program, the rest of the staff will go into these in a little bit more detail here. But just on a high level, we'll be moving forward with the existing planned multimodal projects that have grant funding allocated. That's about $6 million worth of projects that have specific multimodal improvements associated with them. We'll be working on installing pilot projects for safety improvements throughout the community, developing enhanced communication strategy that the communications department's been working hard on, strengthening the police department's role in education and enforcement, of course, and then adding personnel and equipment in Public Works and Communication. All this will be culminating into conversations over the next several months as we look to align our goals with, with funding in '25 and into the future. So, with, with any new process or program, collaboration is, is really key. And as Brent said, you know, you see all the people here before you, this, this collaboration has been a lot of fun over the last, last couple of months, and we're looking forward to continued collaboration between all the internal departments. We've also been collaborating a lot with staff from Littleton Public Schools, leadership with Littleton Public Schools, and the city manager's office meet on a monthly basis to touch base on the progress that we're making. Just yesterday, in fact, there was a safety summit that was held with public, I'm sorry, with, with school district officials. And I think Kenneth will talk about that in a little bit more detail. Traffic Safety Committee is comprised of internal staff from Public Works, Communications, PD, and City Manager's Office. We, we meet on a bi-weekly basis to talk about upcoming, or citizen requests and ongoing safety measures. And then, of course, the safety campaign that, that David and his team are leading has been phenomenal and we'll be talking about that a little bit more too. All right, I want to touch on funding just a little bit. I won't go into too much detail, but before you, there are different categories that we had identified in February when we were last before you. And we've got two columns, one for the funding that was programmed in February and where we're at today. And it's important to note that with any new program or initiative that we need to be flexible. And so, we've shifted some things around to, to fit the needs while still meeting the needs, I'm sorry, sorry, the goals of, of the program. So, maybe just some highlights. The speed feedback signs were something that initially that we thought we were going to deploy on a wider basis, but we realized it would be more strategic to put them on a couple corridors, see how the implementation goes, kind of the data that we're getting for them before making a, a big investment. And I think Shane will talk about that in a little bit more detail too. Schools owners adjustments and pilot project installation, we combined those into one category that'll be going towards future capital improvements. And then sign shop improvements, initially, we, we envisioned that we're going to undertake improvements in the sign shop at Bellevue Service Center, but now we felt it's better to implement those along with larger capital improvements at the whole campus that's being planned. Some new elements that were added is a wayfinding project grant. So, this is a grant we received a couple of years ago. We're in the process of finalizing that. So, this was matching funds on that grant to finalize the project. And then last two elements are related to future corridor studies. You may remember when we were here in February, we identified that there's probably 2 to 3 million dollars needed to undertake corridor studies and nothing identified right now. We were able to set aside a little bit of money to start some of these corridor studies, so that's what those last two items are.
So, only one of those is extra, the grant is external funds and then the corridor and the, then the application is hiring consultant.
That's our, that's our match.
Or the corridor study.
No.
I'm, like, I'm, one of those is new money, right? The wayfinding grant or is it not? It's our match to the grant?
It's our match to the wayfinding.
They're just showing you, in, in February, this is kind of what they presented, how we're going to spend the money. And in actuality, this is how that 2.3 was spent. And so, that $75,000 leverages additional funds, correct? So, yeah. So, that, those additional funds are not on that chart, correct?
Right, the grant funds are not. Yeah, this is, this is our match.
That makes sense?
Yes, thank you.
Really, before you move on, the ATIP grant application, what was the size or what are we going for with that?
We will go into more detail, but we're asking for, the full application will be 2.6 million with 600 grand local match.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, the $20,000 is just, is just preparing the application?
Yeah.
Really quickly on the timeline, again, I won't go into a lot of detail here, but this is just to highlight that as, as we've gone through the last couple of months, things shift a little bit. Generally, we're looking like we're on target with, with a lot of things, but then other items are shifting. For installation, for example, I'm sorry, installation of the pilot projects, that's going to extend a little bit longer than we anticipated, and that was primarily due to delays in procuring the materials necessary for that. So, when we're here in February, we started to have ideas in mind, but once we got into design and then getting the materials here, that'll take a little bit longer. Again, the corridor studies, that'll, they'll last a little bit longer, but that will align just fine with implementation into 2025. All right. Then going into some of the actions that we have undertaken since February. Personnel recruitment, really excited to let you know that we have hired a transportation planner. She started yesterday, actually. Her name is Emily Kleinfeldter. She joins us from Dr. Cog and she was their regional Vision Zero coordinator. So, really excited about, about that hire. She's excited to be here too and contribute on what she's learned on a, on a regional level to implement locally. Traffic engineer, that is actually an internal promotion. Kyle Morris from our engineering team is going to be taking on that role. In the communications department, they have hired Matt Ristiano, and he started. She joins us from Dr. Cog, and she was their Regional Vision Zero Coordinator, so really excited about, about that hire. She's excited to be here too and contribute on what she's learned on a, on a regional level to implement locally. Traffic engineer, that is actually an internal promotion, Kyle Morris from our engineering team is going to be taking on that role. In the communications department, they have hired Matt Ristiano, and he started back in April, and David has been very present with Public Works team, and that's been phenomenal relationship. And then, as we look into 2025 and beyond, we'll be having conversations over the next several months, and you may see before you budget requests for additional personnel, and the traffic operations crew to help with implementation of this program, and then grounds operations for maintenance of protective bike lanes and things like that. Okay.
Alright, yeah, good evening, I'm David Gilbert, I am the City of Littleton's Senior Media Strategist, which is a fancy way of saying, I do the newsletters and social media, so when you walk into my office and see me scrolling Facebook, that's actually what I'm supposed to be doing. So yeah, it, this has been sort of a big component of Safer Streets, is making sure that we are, you know, consistently communicating with the public about what we're doing with each step of the way. So, you know, that's, that's taken a lot of different forms, the sort of primary touch point that we've been focusing on, every two weeks, we publish the Littleton Report online e-newsletter, so that goes out both to an email mailing list as well as via various social media platforms. So we've made sure that the top story in each one of those, going back to February, is a component of Safer Streets. You can see the list up there of some of our recent top stories. We started with an overview, went into increased police enforcement in school zones, new crosswalks, school zone evaluation, and, you know, that, that work continues every two weeks, we're making sure we're giving people an update. Also, another one of our sort of key touchpoints with the public is the Littleton Report Print Edition. This goes to every single mailing address in the city, business and residential, so our past two issues, our top story on the front page has been the Safer Streets project. So we kind of expect that cadence to continue.
Quick question, what's the distribution of Littleton Report Online?
Littleton Report Online, we currently have about thirty-three hundred subscribers to the, to the email distribution list. Our open rate is generally north of fifty percent, which is higher than the national average, and, you know, I, I won't get into the, the convoluted ways in which we track, you know, how that's also seen online on various social media platforms.
You just have a, I know it strays from Safer Streets, but hopefully it grow the distribution for that, to make sure, 'cause I know the paper copy gets into everyone's house, how are we gonna, that's more than thirty-three hundred addresses, how can we get the Littleton Report Online to be more widely distributed?
That's a great question, and that's exactly the sort of stuff that we are continuously working on, making sure that we advertise that well, and, you know, we also, what we kind of do is, you'll see with our social media presence, sort of each component, each story that's built into a Littleton Report Online edition becomes kind of its own social media post. We generally post Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, LinkedIn, Twitter, and we also have a presence on YouTube, so a lot of those get broken out. I did pull some of the social media stats on some of those, strictly for Safer Streets articles currently are, I, I just pulled a couple, Nextdoor, we've seen just shy of thirteen thousand impressions on those. On Facebook, we're, we're pushing towards about twenty-five thousand impressions on, strictly on Safer Streets articles standalone.
Yeah, I just, I was thinking, before I came in here today, I'm like, paper copy was sitting on the table, and I saw the Safer Streets logo, I was like, oh, you know, how many people are seeing that, just a way to get more eyes on that support.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, you know, other ways, we, we are also trying to seek out other ways to, to get off the screens and, and find other ways to, to chat with people. My friends, you're right. Our yard signs that you're gonna start seeing soon, sitting out, plunked in the ground beside some of those pilot projects that are going in around town. We're gonna be asking folks to be filling out surveys so that they can give us some feedback on, on how those pilot projects are working for them. Also, this summer, we've got three meet, greet, and eat events, in which city staff and elected representatives and so forth go out into different city parks. We set up booths, you can meet face-to-face with a lot of these lovely folks, and you can get yourself some cool Safer Streets swag, like these little blinky lights here. I'm a media and publishing guy, so I like to come with visual aids. We have that lovely video for you.
We're gonna say we went on tomorrow when we see it on.
Yeah, exactly, you know what, boy, I can't wait for y'all to see it tomorrow on, on our social media platform.
Just a teaser tonight.
Exactly, just a teaser. So yeah, you know, and we've got a lot of cool ideas kind of in the works, teaming up with our GIS folks to develop some story maps, so that you can kind of explore what some of those pilot projects look like around town, get a sense of where they are, what they are, how they work, and we've got some more video content in the works beyond this one, I promise the audio is gonna be just great. And, you know, I, I think it's, this is a really exciting part, because I feel so fortunate to get to go out in the field with these guys and see the, you know, way these pilot projects come to fruition, see the decisions that have to be made, the criteria that have to be weighed as these go out, and, you know, it's, it's, it's really, you know, an honor to get to hopefully share that with the community and, and help folks see how hard this team is working to bring this vision to life.
David, how do you think we should respond to citizens that are surprised by some of these traffic calming measures in their community? I mean, should we point them to something like Littleton Report? I mean, I feel like I'm pretty, pretty well in the know, but I will say, it was a lovely little surprise when we saw, like, the ones go up, like, near where I live, which I thought was great, and I knew it was coming, I didn't know it was coming then and there, but I can imagine what a surprise that was for other people who maybe are less plugged in.
Sure, yeah, you know, I think, like, you know, we're always trying to find different ways to communicate this, and I think what's, you know, been so dynamic about this project is, you know, this is something that has ramped up quickly in a short amount of time, and so, you know, I think our hope is to make sure that, we're just trying to cross as many of those demographics, every, every social media platform has a different demographic that it reaches into. Like I said, we also try and make sure you're getting something in your mailbox, you have an opportunity to come to the park and, and speak with these guys if you can. And again, you know, hopefully, as we get this survey off the ground, boy, if you're standing there going, you know, what in the heck are these new lines in the road, what in the heck are these new barriers in the street, that you've got a method to tell us what you think about that.
Do we have that somewhere else, like in a, like, regular link that I could send to citizens?
Yes, this is still getting built out, we don't have it up and running yet, but we are gonna be able to have it via QR code as well as via an easy URL.
Not that live, would you be willing to send that?
Not that QR code.
Yeah, not the sample QR code.
But when it's live, would you be able to send that to the council members, that we can be able to advance that out?
Absolutely, we're gonna be blasting that out just everywhere, just shy of skywriting. So.
I was, I was just saying, from our office standpoint, I'm really surprised at the feedback we get by the use of those signs, you know, it's kind of an old-school, new-school way. Good feedback, because the people are actually using them, they, it doesn't take long if you're walking by and you wanna see what's going on, get that code, so.
Yeah, and I'll say, I think, you know, feedback on this is an interesting component, because I think, you know, these guys are so good at making sure that, so much of this is so data-driven, that, that, that we are making sure that we're incorporating components of public outreach efforts, you know, and also, what I come in with when we meet for our Traffic Safety Committee meetings is, I'm bringing in what's coming in via social media, I'm bringing in what's coming in via Facebook message, via Instagram comment, and that those are getting folded into those discussions as well.
How do you respond back to those folks? Like, do you say thanks for your comment, like, on social media, or do you say, we're gonna take this, like, how do you?
Oh, does he, or how should you?
How do you, so our cities accounts, how, people who provide feedback for that, how are they engaged with after they give their feedback?
You know, generally, our communication strategy so far has been a fairly light touch. You know, we recognize that people are eager to, you know, share specific comments about particular areas, and generally, we, we keep kind of a light touch on that, if, if someone has specific requests or complaints, we do try and get back to them, sometimes publicly, sometimes privately, through a private message. You know, we do, do a lot of communicating via private message, either through particularly Instagram and Facebook, but yeah, you know, a lot of times, I'll, I'll kind of bring those as a, as a package to the Traffic Safety Committee, but, but yeah, in general, our strategy has been kind of a light touch on response.
Is that what you're saying? Thank you so much for this, and bringing this to our big meeting?
Yeah, at times, at times.
And then do you, when you bring that, do you bring, like, categories we're hearing? Over the last week, the number of positive comments, or, you know, here's what we're hearing about this area as opposed to that area?
Yes, exactly, yeah, that's, that's.
So you're doing analysis?
Right, that's, that's kind of the discussion that, that takes place in Traffic Safety Committee is, you know, hey, we're, we're hearing a lot about need for stop signs on Kaley, or, or whatever it might be, you know, or, or concerns about a particular, you know, new element of the, of the project.
I feel like the discussions on Nextdoor are highly data-driven, and they're new ones, are you, are you seeing that well, or?
Wantative data.
Exactly.
Solid.
You know, yeah, you know, we, we sort of, it's, it's, it's very interesting, you know, social media commentary is an, an inexact barometer of community sentiment, I mean, it is an important one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, I don't, I don't mean to disregard the importance of reading all that stuff.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's very interesting, social media commentary, like I said, it's, 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 it's inexact, it's, it can be bombastic, but it is an important, you know, barometer that we, that we keep an eye on in terms of how folks are responding to, you know, some of these new elements that they're seeing around town, or some of these new initiatives that are rolling out.
Let's go to the social media landing, back into the, the bike lane. Sorry, speak, yes.
I'll stand up, so everybody wants to see me, and I like to stand behind David, 'cause it makes him nervous. Just like in speed enforcement, when a police officer is behind you, everybody freaks out a little bit, but we were able to ramp up operations fairly quickly, you know, some of the engineering things take a little bit of time, we were able to get some operations going quickly to get an education enforcement piece, and when it comes to traffic safety, we've talked about in the past, it's engineering, enforcement, education, the three Es, we're calling it infrastructure, education, enforcement, so it's I-E. Whatever. So we ran an overtime assignments, because we don't have personnel to, like, specifically assign to all the school zones, but we were able to fill a number of shifts, they're laid out there, and in addition to this, our traffic officers, on-duty traffic officers, concentrated on the school zones when they could, and then from February through the end of the school year, I think there were a total of about one hundred and seventy-one citations issued and fifty-eight warnings issued in the school zones, mostly for speeding. That was the number one citation that we, we had issued. So, and then in addition, we have on the education piece, because it's all, not all about enforcement, Sheri wants to talk a little bit about how we partnered with Littleton Public Schools and what our plans are for the summer and for the coming up school year.
So I'll stand up too, 'cause I'm short down here. So yes, we partnered with Littleton Public Schools, and we're in the process of kind of creating a curriculum, so as they're coming back to school, we're gonna work closely with our SROs, and then the curriculum created by LPS, to kind of figure out a way for our SROs to get in touch with all those kids, 'cause it's very different, right? Whether you've got an elementary school, it's gonna look like very different curriculum versus a middle school, and then versus high school, and even touching on safe driving as well, because a lot of those kids are starting to get their licenses. So that's what we're working on in the summer, that's gonna be implemented in the fall, and then we also just finalized, we partnered with Pedal Bike, Bike Shop, they are amazing, I'm very excited. So save the date, July twentieth, we're having a bike maintenance and safety event, where we're gonna take over the parking lot, Pedal has got tons of people, they've set up so they can inspect those bikes, make sure everybody's doing what they need to do, we're gonna set up a little course for the kids to go through and be able to ride through. We have cooler lights than the communications department for their bikes, 'cause they say PD and they're blue. So, and then we're also starting our social media campaign that's coming directly from the police department, I've been really fortunate enough to have that partnership with Pedal, 'cause they're kind of feeding me the, hey, these are the top things that we're seeing as far as bike and pedestrian driver safety across the country, and so we're starting to push those out. So as we're advertising for our summer event, and then we're posting those social media, and David and I, as always, work closely together, where we share, retweet, all those things, so that way we can get as many eyeballs as possible.
Sounds like you work closely together, except when you have better swag than him.
Well, you know.
Where is that event, the bike event?
It's gonna be in the pedal parking lot, and the reason behind that was, they just have all this stuff there, right? So all they have to do is set up that tent, and then they can start inspecting bikes, and then of course, we'll have our bike officers on their new e-bikes, and then their regular bikes, riding with the kids and hanging out.
Chief, what, what's the plans for enforcement in the fall?
Same thing, so we'll try to run some more operations that are specifically designed, especially, we always like to focus at the beginning of the year too, to, 'cause over the summer, the drivers kind of lose that awareness, so as this, as the school year begins in August, we'll have more active enforcement. In addition to the, you know, the marked officers, police officers, police vehicles there, we also utilize the three speed trailers that the city uses, and now those are a visible deterrent, we put the speed trailers up, and unfortunately, unfortunately, the bicyclists have to go around the speed trailer, 'cause we usually put them in a bike lane, but, but so those also allow us to force multiply, and all that stuff will be deployed again in the fall.
I'll just mention, in, in my monthly coordination meetings with Superintendent Lambert from the school district, they're very excited about the potential for the, the actual education in, in the schools with the SROs. They use the term between the bells, which anyone, if you know, school district policy on, you know, sharing outside information, that's kind of a, a big thing that they try not to do, but Superintendent has told me several times that this, that this material will be delivered between the bells during, which means during class time, that the teachers and the staff are gonna have to plan for, in partnership with the, the SROs, so we're excited about that.
Yeah, I would love to get just like a little more information on the curriculum when it's available.
Absolutely, as soon as we get it more finalized, we'll have that.
Any other questions for me that Sheri can answer?
I do wanna point out the flyers as well, that we have just made, that we're gonna start putting, you know, the exact spots, but on cars that are parked in the bike lanes, so instead of immediately, you know, sorry, I know you're enjoying the park, here's a ticket, it's just that, this is an official warning that you don't wanna park here, 'cause you will get a ticket, so we've started those as well.
So that was actually Jim's idea, which was great, if you don't remember, you threw that out in one of our meetings.
I always give you the credit, Sheri.
Yeah, but Sheri did a great job designing, and our goal is not to ticket, you know, the families enjoying the parks, and the open space is right off the bat, it's more of an education piece at first, and if that doesn't work, then we'll have to move to that enforcement piece, but that's the goal, and, and our first round of those, we, a little bit of a.
Shh, don't share.
Little bit of a typo that we all missed.
Littleton, we write so often, the word Littleton.
We spelled it wrong.
Hey, hey, we could've really gotten on the news for that.
So that's how social media changed our names.
Like, when you misspell bowls, I've done that before.
Any other questions for us?
Along with the parking and the bike lanes, I know some of the places are not well-marked, even though they are bike lanes, if there's not a no parking sign up, are we talking about putting some no parking signs up, or at least more clearly? I'm thinking specifically on Euclid Avenue, where it says no parking bike lane, and then it says loading zone, and then it says no parking bike lane, it's very confusing where you can park for the middle part of the bike lane, and then like Wintermere, where there's a clearly marked bike lane, but cars park there as well, but there's no no parking sign. Any thoughts about putting just no parking?
Is there a specific spot on Wintermere you're referring to?
Wintermere north of Bellevue, where there is a clearly identified bike lane, and cars park there all the time for the.
That'll be one of the areas we're doing, one of the protected bike lanes, so cars won't be able to get in there anymore, once we have that equipment in place, that'll help there, but yeah, we are reviewing with the bike lanes, especially as part of these pilot projects, if there's signs that need to be put up at the same time, our crew's looking at that first, we have to get locates and stuff, and that'll be the first thing you see before we make other changes in those areas.
Thank you, Ray, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, now we are going to dive into all the work that Public Works has been doing. I will say, we also have bike lights for the eating grades of the competition of who has the best bike lights there is.
Maybe talk together, and we're all one bike lane?
We have a front and a back light, though, so, and bike bells.
We've got sunglasses and umbrellas.
Communications, communications, can you work on the? Communications, communications, can you work on the communications between departments?
This feels like healthy competition, I'm all in.
Um, so yes, we will go over pilot projects, our school zone safety evaluation, the corridor and design studies, our traffic calming evaluation, neighborhood traffic calming and then speed feedback signs. Um, so here are just a couple examples of some pilot projects. So the one on the left is a pedestrian crossing improvement. This is actually at Lee Gulch. And so we use this temporary curb, we call it C curb or or tough curb, um, to narrow the lanes and and to allow drivers to or to warn drivers that there's a pedestrian crossing coming up. We're also going to be striping some new school crosswalks, um, with with some signage and then adding some protected bike lanes. And just to note, there's lots of different types of way to of protection for bike lanes. So as part of these pilot projects, we're going to look at, um, some different types of equipment, um, so we can really determine what works best for our city, what has different maintenance implications, what's easiest to install. So we're we're trying to test out some different materials on purpose so that when we start to roll this out citywide, we kind of have our our true tested equipment, yes.
So how long is the test period that you're envisioning?
It's a good question. Um, I don't think we have a super defined period right now, um.
We want at least extended through the winter so we can see what implications are of trying to keep them cleared with different equipment and different materials, so.
That was gonna be my comment.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Um, so diving a little deeper into these pilot projects, so, um, we have a couple different categories that I will go over. So the first one is some trail mark parkway crossings. So these are all trail crossings along trail mark parkway. We're upgrading the crossings to be, um, a MUTCD compliant with the the actual crosswalk itself and then adding some additional signage. So there's eight locations there. Um, we have our trail connectivity study crossings. So these are many of the pilot projects you've probably seen, there's four of these locations. Um, these locations came directly from our trail connectivity study that we wrapped up this spring. Um, and these were ranked at as high priority location. So these use a lot of that temporary C curb that we just saw in the previous slide, um, as well as striping an additional signage to, um, create bull bouts, um, or bump outs where we're we're taking some space away from from the roadway and at, um, shortening the crossing distance and adding more visibility for pedestrians there. Um, the next category is our school crosswalks, so we're striping twenty new crosswalks around various schools in Littleton and those are in yellow on the map. Um, we have some bike pilot projects, so four of these will be protected bike lanes, as I mentioned, where we'll be testing out some different equipment. Um, these were selected based off of their either existing buffered bike lanes, so it's really easy. We can just go and put protection in that buffer or there's enough existing right of way where we can add a buffer to an existing bike lane and then add in that protection. Uh, some of the other corridors that we'll talk about a little later, there are more right of way implications. So it's not as easy just to to go down and stripe and add equipment. You have to really look at how the right of way works and if there is right of way acquisition needed in the future. Um, Irving is an example where we striped bike lanes last year. This year, we're looking to add a a buffer to those bike lanes and some more traffic calming along that corridor. And then we also have four other locations that we did pilot projects last year. And with all of our pilot projects, we take data before and after. And so these were locations where we were hoping that we would see speeds drop more than they did. So we want to revisit these concepts and see what else we can add to help create more traffic calming at these locations. Um, and then as David mentioned, we're doing the pilot project feedback signage and survey. So we're hoping to get some good feedback from residents of what works, what doesn't work, maybe some locations that we're missing. Um, just just to see how the public's feeling, so, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I feel like I hear a lot about Littleton Academy and I don't see any, anything around that.
Yeah, so you know, this list of of school crosswalks, we looked at preliminary of what are immediate locations that we feel like need more more crosswalk striping, um, as part of our school safety study that Aaron will talk about shortly. Um, we are, you know, we did observations on all twelve schools in the city and also did a huge existing conditions analysis. So coming out of that, there will be additional locations where we've identified that need more crosswalks, more signage, maybe some bull bouts with with temporary C curb and whatnot as well, so. Um, these are just our initial list, but more will be coming out of out of these evaluations.
So the Macintosh was included in the school survey, the school safety?
Macintosh was not. Um, we did do Saint Mary's, which is long prince there, but the really very, very few people walked to Macintosh, it's mainly a driven to school. So it wasn't one we were gonna focus on and it's much smaller than all the others.
Well, thank you for including Saint Mary's.
The, uh, question I had was, so the trail connectivity, um, crossings are great. Those are the 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 pylons and the little curbs up there that we, I think Robert mentioned a couple weeks ago and Gretchen talked about. I think I've actually happened upon three of them in the last couple days here, um, delivered kind of all between three of them. But, uh, I think the Gallup and Shepherd and the Powers and Fox, um, are pretty straightforward, this is straight crossing. I know the, uh, Stirling Lake Avenue is one I think we all got emails about and that's definitely a little more of a complex intersection. And knowing how the, uh, eastbound traffic, kind of the the the, uh, parking lane that was blocked off kind of wasn't blocked off for cars to pull into and it was causing some issues with cars. Is that gonna be fixed and, you know, I think take a look at some of those?
Yeah, so you know, our our traffic operations crew goes out and does this, you know, as best they can with all of their other priorities. And so that was an unfortunate situation where they went out and they were striping that new, yeah, bump out, um, on on the west side of Lake and they actually ran out of materials. Um, so, you know, that's a situation that we didn't necessarily anticipate. So now we've tried to mitigate that where we hatched that bump out, um, to try to notify the cars that this is not a space for you to travel in. And then we have orange cones where future, um, C curb will go with delineators, so. Um, yeah, unfortunately, we didn't foresee that coming, but we're we're hoping that the current situation can mitigate any of those right turns. I know we received emails about and concerns about as well, so.
Did somebody get back to the citizen?
I did.
I did.
Yes. Oh, that's right. Any other questions on pilot projects?
Do you, do you expect to come to us with another set of pilot projects in the, or are we piloting it and we're done with pilots? I mean, we're 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 learning from our pilots.
Yeah.
We're, do you expect any new ones or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, you know, we've been doing the pilot project, uh, program for a couple years now, um. And so we anticipate to to keep moving forward with this every year and, you know, we find locations either through published plans like the trail connectivity study, um, through resident requests, our neighborhood traffic calming program, um, other quick wins as well, so there's a combination, we we do foresee these moving forward. And and like we're doing this year with the twenty twenty-three project, pilot project locations, just because we do it one year, it doesn't mean that we're just doing it, right? We want to continue to make sure that it's the best solution for the context of that location um, and that we are slowing down traffic and making it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists.
The ultimate idea behind the pilot project program is that we have them staggered over several years where the first year you're analyzing something new, if it needs to be tweaked, you make tweaks the next year. But once we feel like we have it down and it's making a difference, then the plan is to go and put something in permanent. So that's a progress we want to go through, but we don't want to invest in permanent installation unless we know it's gonna make a difference long term. So that's kind of the purpose of these pilot projects and the data collection behind them.
And these haven't all been, um, put in yet, but will be by the end of the year, by the end of summer here?
Correct.
Correct.
Really by the end of the summer.
Right. I mean, all the, the red dots have all been put in, what else has been, the green dots?
So green dots are existing and so we've made some changes to them, some are still in progress. The red dots are complete, um, the yellow school zone crosswalks will be complete before school starts. Um, and then the protected bike lanes, we are working on concepts right now and then we're also needing to order materials. So just as, you know, however long it takes to get materials in and for our crews to install. So the goal is before school starts in the fall, just depending on timeline and and equipment, it it may lead into the that fall semester. But our goal is to try to get it done all the summer.
So speaking of schools, uh, one of the, one of the initiatives we've taken on is the school zone safety evaluation. And we hired a company called Y two K who specializes in safety and, yeah, interesting name. It's not what you think it is, though. Um, and so we hired them in April, we kicked them off right away and got them out in the field, um, in April, May so that we could make observations at all the schools, all twelve of our LPS schools around town and Saint Mary's would be the one that's not an LPS school. And this included all of our elementary schools, our middle schools, high schools and charter schools as a part of that. The observations were done at each school in the morning and the and the afternoon for drop off and pickup. And then for the high schools, we also did lunchtime, um, observations, knowing that Heritage and Littleton both have lots of students that try and go off campus, um, to get lunch also to to understand how that impacts operations. Um, we also, as a part of that, met with the school principals and the SROs. Um, oftentimes they were out there while we were doing observations so they could help point things out to us and we usually talk to them either before or after we did the observations to tell them what we were seeing and get more input from them on on concerns and stuff that they have. Um, Y two K and Tim Weaver, who's our project manager in this, also had private meetings individually with a lot of those principals too to get more input from them. And then as Brent referenced earlier, just yesterday, we had a school safety summit, which was really exciting because we were able to get all the principals in here. We only had two schools that weren't able to attend yesterday, but we had, um, representatives from all the schools and we had LPS administration here, great representation. And we kind of walked through with them, one, what we observed out in the field, but then we also walked them through a couple of different, um, not projects, but kind of a, what's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, um, kind of to get more, um, input from them, they could hear what other schools are dealing with, what's good and bad. So we kind of walked through individually, we broke up into little groups focused on elementary, middle, high school and, um, charter schools because we know they all experience slightly different, um, different issues with, um, drivers and and behaviors around each of their schools. So we shared what we observed was working well, what we saw that wasn't working so well and then things that were out of their control too. Um, for example, you know, by Goddard, there's a really steep hill. There's nothing we can really do about that hill, but we need to be, um, cognizant of it, of how it affects operations, especially with buses and and people trying to drop off in that area, just as an example. So we first did that, um, and then we had, um, a, what is the word I'm looking for? It's not a project, uh.
Like an activity.
Activity, thank you, an activity. Where we had them kind of go through and identify of all these different concerns that we had laid out at the schools, what were their primary focuses and issues at their particular school. That way we could kind of see, um, individually schools, what they're dealing with, but then overall, all the schools in general, where are their major concerns? And this included categories like looking at circulation on site, looking at crossings near the schools, looking at the segments that for the roadways that are right around the schools, looking at driver behavior and then also looking at programmatic things that we, you know, that they face, such as do they have enough staff or do they have an SRO that can help them with these other things that we've been talking about from a communication standpoint and education standpoint. So we walked through all of that with them and what we're gonna do as a follow up is Y two K is putting together all the existing conditions we observe or existing condition information we gathered out there, all the observation information. And they're putting together then their evaluation and their recommendations. Our plan is to go back and meet with each of the schools in the first two weeks of August before they start back to school to meet with each individual principal and their administration to talk about, okay, here's the recommendations, here's what we think we can do right away as kind of some low hanging fruit changes. But then we also are gonna identify things that'll take a little longer to put in place, that we'll continue to work on, um, in the fall and then also long term things. So these would be things that need funding that we don't have right now. Maybe things like changing, um, their parking lot layouts, things like that, that we would be longer term, that we'd look to do in future years once we have funding for those. So we're really excited about how this has gone and it's been a great collaborative effort with LPS, both at the administration level and individual schools. And the feedback we were getting from people, air from the principals and stuff, is they they really have enjoyed this and it really helps for them to hear what other schools are doing so they can know what maybe they could change and make improvements on. And then the sharing too, they they really good at sharing with other schools. Hey, here's what we, we had this issue before, here's how we fix that so that other schools can learn from them too. So it's not just about us, but getting everyone talking to each other and and collaborating.
Maybe we can get the T P, uh, PTOs, uh, involved in that also that August meeting. SROs, do they have any authority to give tickets?
Yes, absolutely, and we heard from some schools, uh, I'll I'll take Euclid for example, they have a really good system where everyone that's out working the crosswalks and stuff, which is usually administrative staff along with the SRO, have walkie talkies. If they see someone doing something that they shouldn't be doing, they walkie talkie into the main desk, the license plate. And then the SRO follows up on all those license plates and calls those parents individually and says, here's what we saw you doing and why you shouldn't do this in the future and if you do, we're giving you a ticket. They, I I also, what we observed from out there, the lot of the SROs have really good relationship with the kids too, which is very important because having that relationship, the kids tend to listen to them then. Whether it's them telling them not to cross right now or if they see kids that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing on their bikes or on their scooters and stuff, for example, not wearing their helmets, riding on the wrong side of the street, riding in the street rather in a bike lane. Um, they point that out to them and they they call them out and and tell them why they need to fix that. So the SROs are a great, um, great way to utilize, you know, and and to get really communication to the kids right away and to the parents. Um, of course, we only have SROs at middle schools and high schools though. So at the elementary school level, then that go all goes on the staff if they want to try and, um, report someone that's doing something, a violation, and then go back to the police to try and give them a ticket. Any other questions on the schools?
Did the traffic calming circles come up in any of these conversations?
So I'm gonna talk about traffic calming in just a bit. Um, but it obviously Euclid is very mindful of the incident that happened around them. That was a conversation we had just yesterday as part of the summit and what can be done about that, but that's something we are focusing on certainly in the future.
All right, so corridor and design studies, this is where I'm going to talk about more a little bit about ATIP, um, or the Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program. Um, so these corridors back, so back in February, um, we identified a list of corridors where we know we need to do some more comprehensive study of these. Um, these corridors were all identified, most of them were identified in our transportation master plan as needing, um, some sort of multimobile improvement, whether it's, um, improved sidewalks because they're narrow or not a, nonexistent, um, some type of bicycle facility, whether it's protected or or painted on street. Um, so we, we've known about these corridors and have known for a while that we need to do some sort of comprehensive study. Um, unfortunately, none of these fall with on the regional roadway network that Dr. Cog defined. So, you know, in the last five years since we've published the T M P, we focused a lot on our height injury network, which really falls on many of our arterial roadways. Um, so think Mineral, Broadway, Santa Fe, Bellevue. Um, and those are all regional roadways defined by Dr. Cog, so we can get tip funding for those. These corridors are more of these connector streets, more internal streets, right, where people live. And so these don't qualify for that type of funding. So we've been on the search of of what other funding opportunities are out there. None of these corridor studies were included in that two point three million dollars identified back in February. Um, so through our, you know, research of different grant programs, we have found this Active Transportation Infrastructure Investment Program. Um, it's the first year of this program, it is a U S D O T, uh, funding, so it's a, we'd be a direct recipient of federal funding whereas typically, you know, we go through Dr. Cog or C dot to administer that funding. Um, so the grant application is actually due, uh, next Monday, we're hoping to submit this week, uh, if we get everything done, that's the goal. Um, so for the nine corridors on the map here, we've identified two point six million dollars of of funding need. Um, so the grant would cover two million dollars of that and then the local match would be six hundred thousand. And this would be spread over two years, would be about a two year project. Um, so we are requesting a letter of support from city council for this. And I do have a draft that, um, could be signed by the mayor if you're in support of this. Um, and that would just help our application to show that city council is supportive of this project and and be, would be willing to give local match for this if if we are successful. Um, we're not totally sure when you get notified, federal grants don't really give a timeline like more local grants do. So we're thinking late twenty twenty-four, maybe pre-November first. We're thinking late twenty twenty four, maybe pre-November for specific reasons or early twenty twenty five. So. We're not totally sure. Um, our plan is though, you know, if we are not successful with this grant program. We know that federal funding is probably where we're going to have to go in order to get this type of funding for these corridors. And even just beyond the, the, the study, planning study and design study for construction. We know we're going to have to get more grant funding for that. So. We felt like this was a good opportunity for us to, to dip our toe in the water and a lot of the work that we're doing for this grant program, if let's say we're not successful. We have a lot of that pre-work done when we go after future federal funding, like a RACE grant, let's say.
I just have one, one question. The difference between the corridor study map that was presented in February. I think one of the discussion was that we talked about Alati, considering that it had two schools and three, if you count Heritage just around the corner from that. And then I think Ridge was a future um, corridor study where Alati was twenty twenty five. What was the rationale for kind of?
Yes, so Euclid and Alati were actually advancing this year. Um, so Shane will actually talk about that on the next slide. So we felt like that was really our, our highest priority. So we wanted to take some of that two point three million dollars. I think we. As Brent talked about earlier, it's about um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to advance those this year. Because they were our first priority. And then for the sake of this grant, we, we internally have our list of priority corridors, right? For, for the sake of this, we are presenting them all as one package, knowing that, let's say, we get less than our full ask of two point six million. Or, or we decide we're going to have to split this um, into multiple projects in the future. We know what those priority corridors are, right? So you're right, like Ri- Ridge wasn't at the top, but. For the sake of this, we're just showing it all as, as one equal.
Right, I just want to show, show, so Alati is higher priority than this, that's why.
Yeah, I would, but I would encourage you to share your priorities with us.
Totally, yeah.
So I, I think that would be valuable to, to, and I'm not telling you to redo your presentation now, but I think that. There's value in us understanding those priorities as well. Not because I want to be critical of them, but. But I think prioritization is really important because it's all risky on whether we get the money and so.
And I think they're reflecting our priorities and their.
No, I, I, yeah, I don't feel disempowered, but I just think sharing those priorities would be valuable.
Absolutely, and we can definitely share that with you. And, and one thing I forgot to mention too, you know, the idea is that we wanted to study these as a whole. So that we can really look at it from a network perspective, right? Just doing things on one corridor, you may not be thinking of, oh, there's going to be this facility on, on this connecting roadway or whatnot. So. The way that we have the scope in this grant program is that we really look at it from a network perspective. And then once we kind of figure out what the facilities are from that network perspective, then we go into each individual corridor as well. And that's really where that prioritization comes out of, you know, depending on, on funding, you know, how far can we advance each corridor? Is it fifteen percent design through this identified funding or is it thirty percent design? And then again, moving forward, we know that we're going to have to find grant funding for construction, right? Because this is just for up to thirty percent design, so we'll need funding for final design, hundred percent design. And then construction, and that's really where those priority corridors are going to, to come into play of. You know, which one, which corridors are going to go after construction funding first.
And are we going to be doing that same kind of prioritization activity with Broadway soon? I mean, because we're, I don't think we've got the final Broadway corridor study and we're going to have to. Personally, it's how are those things inter, how are those things coordinated? And are we going to, as a council, going to learn about prioritization through Broadway? Is that what's going to happen?
Yes, we have a, an August council meeting, I think, scheduled to, to discuss Broadway. And so we'll be releasing here the, the final study online um, as part of kind of uh, everything that took place and then we'll be reviewing it in August, yeah.
Are there any other corridors that I've just forgot about that we're also studying? Because I'm not paying attention.
I don't think so.
Bulls.
Oh yeah, bulls in the future, yeah.
Tip grant to study that twenty twenty six. So we'll be studying all the way from the western border to Santa Fe for that quarter as well.
Thank you for reminding me.
And then future Littleton Boulevard sub-area plan that would include analysis of multimodal facilities along Littleton Boulevard as well. Any other questions?
Great, so um, yeah, as Kenna mentioned, and actually as Brent mentioned earlier, you know, in the shift of funding from the February meeting to this meeting. One of the things that we tried to prioritize is doing a corridor study right now. And so, you know, Kenna has been leading the, the A TIP application to fund all of those corridor studies. Uh, but like she mentioned, you know, we're, we're using that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to advance a corridor study of Euclid and Alati uh, starting this year. So. The studies that Erin had mentioned, the traffic calming study and the school safety evaluation. That this study this coming year will build upon that, right? So we'll already have a good foundation as we go into the Euclid and Alati corridor study. Um, and the ideas that will come out and not just have a study that sometimes people get frustrated at because it sits on a shelf, but that, as Kenna mentioned, will actually go into design. And the idea will be is that we'll identify within those corridors, some low hanging fruit or some areas with the, the highest value targets when it comes to improving safety. And those are the things that we'd be look to kind of construct first. And so those are the things, as you see, as you see on this slide. Looking to target construction in summer of twenty twenty five, those are the things you would see. We also know that with the corridor studies, as, as Kenna mentioned, we won't have the funding to kind of go and construct the entire, reconstruct the entire corridor like we'd like to. So one of the things that we're going to look to do in the, in this initial corridor study is come up with a quick build concept that really mimics what the final design will look like. And so that way we can go in with paint and post the stuff that you're seeing, you know, all around the city right now. And really as much as we can mimic that final design, so. And this, this first corridor study this year will really kind of set the stage, will figure some things out uh, on how we proceed with the rest of them. One of the things that we want to do is, you know, with these pilot projects, we're really kind of doing the install and then doing the public engagement, right? Because we wanted to come and get something on the ground. We don't necessarily want to do that and make that the precedent for how we do projects, right? So, you know, thinking about how do we have a really community-driven uh, public engagement process through the corridor study is something we'll figure out. And then another thing we need to figure out is, you know, our T M P from twenty nineteen sets um, street types, which is one of the things you do if you're coming up with a complete streets plan. Where it stopped is it didn't set specific modal priorities for each street. So one of the things we'll kind of figure out through these corridor studies is, you know, what are the modal priorities on each street and, and how does that play out, right? We may say we want to prioritize bikes and pedestrians on these neighborhood streets, but what does that really look like? What, what, what trade-offs do we have, right? Where do we get rid of parking? Where do we narrow things up to, to provide for these spaces or where do we consider taking right away? So. And that'll be kind of the, set the stage for the, the rest of the corridor studies, so.
And now, getting back to the traffic calming evaluation and, and the question about the traffic circle. So. We've also hired uh, David Evans and Associates um, to help us conduct this traffic calming.
Different David Evans?
Yes, unrelated.
And his associates. That's right.
I didn't know we had a T M P slash plan.
Different David Evans, everyone.
So the, the purpose of this evaluation that they're going to do, and it's going to be coordinated, coordinated with the school zones um, study as well. Is looking at the different types of traffic calming we have in place right now all around the city. And we're going to have it, have them evaluate it for us so that we aren't just the ones looking at it going, oh, it seems to work fine. We want to get someone in here who has national um, experience of what works all around, not only this region, but nationally, what's being used in other places. And implement that here. And this is going to be tied also to our neighborhood traffic calming program as well. We're going to have them kind of update that toolkit that we have right now for that ne- neighborhood traffic calming, so that when people put in requests. And we are going to go out and actually make some changes, we have kind of a toolkit to guide them to what we're going to pick from and why. So that everyone has an understanding of why we're doing certain things. So as a part of that, they will be looking at these traffic circles. It's interesting because uh, someone in our, in, in Public Works just shared with me um, a story today about um. An issue that came up in Denver, where they put in some markings very similar to this traffic circle. It wasn't with the traffic circle, but it was where the, the Y. Is formed on the ground with the, the double yellow. And the purpose, as they interviewed people for Denver, was to do that horizontal deflection, right, to make people have to move over and then move back. Well, what they didn't do was any kind of um, any kind of equipment with the striping. And so they're out there videoing and people are just driving straight over the lines, right? They're not moving over because there's nothing preventing or making them have to move over. So it was interesting to see that other, you know, municipalities have the same issues, even Denver, who's very progressive in what they've been trying to do. With um, calming traffic and, and putting in more bike lanes and stuff throughout their community, that they struggle with things at times also. And, but it's those type of experiences, we want um, you know, this company to come in and share with us so that we can really. Make sure that what we're putting in place moving forward in the future is going to work appropriately. We don't want to invest in um, traffic calming out there that's not going to have a, an effect, right? We don't want to put something in that might have other safety implications too. Which obviously is the concern that's come up with these traffic circles that we have in place. So the timing of that, um, they're, they just kicked off. Um, we had our initial meeting with them. They're starting to do kind of their assessment of what our existing conditions are out there. Um, and then we'll work with them to come up with evaluations and, and like I said, um, recommendations and then that toolkit. Hopefully this fall is what we're targeting to have a, to wrap up that project. And again, to coordinate the timing with the school zones too, to make sure they both are coming up with shared and collaborative findings, right? What type of traffic calming, if any, should be in our school zones as well.
I would, I would encourage you to, if you need to collect more information around those traffic circles during school time. Giving yourself another month to do that makes sense to me.
Sure, I appreciate that.
All right, and as Erin mentioned, the, you know, the, the traffic calming safety evaluation will feed into our existing neighborhood traffic calming program. And before we kind of talk about some of the tools that we're using now, I think it's important to kind of take a step back and see where that program's come from. So when Erin started back in twenty fifteen, our neighborhood traffic calming program was a piece of paper and somebody took some light out. And lighted out Greenwood Village and literally copied and pasted Littleton and then put it on a Xerox machine. And that was our neighborhood traffic calming program. And so, you know, as we've added staff here, uh, kind of with each staff person, the program has grown. So in twenty nineteen. You know, we added thresholds and more data collection to the program. Uh, when Kenna came and was that two years ago? We really kind of took the program from just having thresholds and being an email request form. To being a form where you can go online and request and then you can geo-locate your problem. Which was one of our bottlenecks is when somebody writes an email and says, I'm having a traffic concern here. That might be clear to them, but it's not clear to us. And so it's really, the program has really been made efficient over the last few years as the transportation group has expanded. And one of the tools that we're using uh, right now that we just recently got is Urban S D K. And so Urban S D K allows us, it's a, it's a big data platform where we can look at the entire city. And it shows us what speeds are on any, speeds and volume on any given roadway. So what this allows us to do is really kind of cut down one of our major bottlenecks in the neighborhood or in, yeah, the neighborhood traffic calming program. Which is the data collection. So we currently have radar traffic counters, which are, are really nice. We can go hang them up ourselves. But it's very time intensive when you only have, you know, a six-person, a six-person staff team uh, to do that data collection. So. So this will allow us to kind of hit more issues at once, be more effective uh, when citizens come to the website and want to report one of these issues and it'll help us uh, deal with it more effectively. So um, yeah, and I think uh, you know, one of the things it also allows us to do, not just um, handle a greater volume of issues. It also allows us to be proactive. And so as we have those, the, the neighborhood traffic calming program and the traffic safety committee have a lot of overlap. And so we meet, when we meet as a traffic safety committee, one of the things we're going to start doing is review the monthly reports from Urban S D K and see, you know. We know streets that we have speeding on like Santa Fe, right? But are there neighborhood streets where uh, you know, the big data is showing us that, hey, speeds are creeping up here, volumes are creeping up here? And can we get ahead of a problem before a citizen emails us about, or before we have a series of crashes that maybe injure somebody? So.
I have two questions. So, so the data from S D K, is it from cell phone movement or is it estimates of traffic?
It is, yeah. So what they do, uh, and I don't understand all of it because I'm not a coder, but what they do is they take those connected devices, uh, whether it be a car or a cellphone. And they have algorithms that they plug those into to come up with these numbers. Now, uh, we evaluated several different companies before we decided to go with Urban S D K. The reason Urban S D K seems to be the best option is because their algorithms are really tailored to our location versus just a national algorithm. And with some of the companies that do kind of that big national algorithm, we found that uh, the speeds and the volumes they gave us. With counts we have were like forty percent off versus the ones with Urban S D K, we saw the speeds on their program were like two miles an hour off. Which gives us a much narrower target to say like, okay, this, you know, this might be an issue, but we don't have to worry that like. Well, Urban S D K says that, you know, everybody's going ten miles an hour on Santa Fe, so looks good, let's just move on, right?
Is my next question. Is this an actual screenshot or an example of what things look like? Because I'm hard pressed to believe between Wintermere and Luthen that people are going seventy-five miles an hour on Peak View.
Oh yeah, uh, thi- this is an actual screenshot and I don't know, so, yeah, so you're talking about the yellow section right there?
Yeah, yeah, that's the block between Wintermere and Luthen on, on Peak View, seventy, I mean, yellow.
That would be. Yeah, so uh, yeah, so this is a screenshot and what it is, is when you, when you scroll.
The section that's highlighted, that might make sense too, because it looks like it's.
Exactly, yeah. So when you scroll over a section and click it, it highlights yellow. And so, yeah, that little dropdown menu.
That makes more sense.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so.
But where do you put the white on?
Right on the screen, it works great. Yeah, and, and so the nice thing too about this is this screenshot you see is. So right now, the way we respond to traffic calms, we want to be as transparent as possible with the public, right? So these, these radar counters are great, but they give us a workbook with, you know, every single data point of a car that's come by. So it's, you know, tens of thousands of data points. In a workbook and it summarizes it, but we send it to people. And before they even open the email, I know their eyes glaze over, right? Few people call us back and want to talk through, but most people, I think, get the spreadsheet and then don't, don't respond. This allows us to send a link and they don't have to have a login, they don't have to give up their personal information and it'll go just to this section that they complained about. At a cer- the certain time that they were concerned about and they can click on it and interact with the data, just like if they had the program, so. It's a pretty powerful tool.
And just to emphasize, you know, our, our intent isn't to use Urban S D K as the be all and all. It's just to narrow down and give us a sense of where are their potential issues that when, then we can go out and collect more specific data to make sure it's accurate and stuff. But it allows us to cover a lot more area a lot quicker that way.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, I mean, I feel like the, the, the vision zero focus on um, crashes that are fatal or have injuries. Is not fully connected to the value of creating streets that feel safer. And so having data that helps us think more about whether certain places feel more or less safe because of speeds or because of volume. And, and, and just having more data to help us think about how we make things feel safer, I think is really valuable. Because I know our crashes and injuries are, are mostly on our thoroughfares.
Right.
And the places we want people to feel safe are on the neighborhood connectors where people are moving to the schools and the parks. And so just helping us expand that conversation to how do we make places feel safe, I think is really valuable.
Sure.
And have it be a data-driven discussion versus um. Just anecdotes are valuable, but they can't be the whole conversation.
Exactly, yeah.
Totally, and you know, through our neighborhood traffic calming program, speeds is just one thing that we look at. We also look at crashes. We look at, is this a identified school route? Is this, you know, is there certain projects that plans identified? So, you know, speed is one of the main tools we look at, but we, we look kind of holistically too as well, so.
Okay, back to me. So you remember we came to you in February and talked about speed feedback signs? And initially our intent was to go out and put them in a lot of places, you know, our previous public works director was really high on that. And as we dug into it a little further, we had concerns about putting these, especially in school zones, which was the original intention. Because they are dependent on what the speed limit is on those roadways as well. So we, we panned that back a little bit and we're currently using these speed feedback signs more for these future corridors that we want to analyze. So we went and installed ten of them earlier this year. We first had them on what we call stealth mode, which is they are operating, but they don't give you any feedback. They're just blank. And that's to give us kind of a base understanding of what's going on on those roadways from a speed and volume standpoint. Then we turn them on, it starts giving feedback to people and then we can look at the data again and see, did it make a difference or not? And, you know, you can see up there where we've put them so far, we put them on some of these key corridors where we thought we wanted to focus on to begin with. Certainly we can add more moving forward in the future, but the, the real powerful thing about the newest feedback signs that we purchased is that ability to collect data. So that we can download it and constantly be keeping track of what's going on on these corridors.
I'm feeling a bit targeted by.
Did you notice that the speeds declined once people got feedback?
Initially, what we've found is it's very minimal. What, what we really are finding more so than anything is um, that. If you look at the people that are speeding about five to ten miles an hour over the speed limit, once you turn on the feedback signs, they tend to drop down. Into that one to five mile an hour. But overall, you're not really getting the people that are speeding excessively, right? They're going to do that regardless and that's something that the speed feedback signs really don't address. It's more about probably the majority of us sitting around the table, people who intend to be very careful. But sometimes your speed just creeps up a little bit and then you get the feedback and you go, oh jeez, I might need to back off just a little. but sometimes your speed just creeps up a little bit and then you get the feedback and you go, oh geez, I might need to back off just a little bit because I didn't realize going down this hill I'm a little faster than I realized. So it has more of an effect on those type of drivers, the ones that are more conscientious, than the ones that are gonna be extreme regardless, unfortunately.
Yeah, and one thing I'll just add, you know, with the, the data-driven approach we're trying to, trying to take to everything is that it really allows us to have a, a uniform way that we approach issues and also an equitable way. Because sometimes you can get, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? And so we don't, you know, there's some times where we get a complaint that comes over and over again from one neighborhood or one street. And when we can collect the data and show them, well, you know, actually there's not a problem of speeding here, then that allows us to address the issue better, rather than just go to where people are registering complaints and say, well, we're gonna do something to quiet people down, right? Because then we're taking resources away from somewhere else where there might be a speeding issue, so.
Got a kind of a silly question and I think I don't answer with the amount of times it happens, but is there any way to tease out cyclists? Because I know I'm biking, it'll pick me up on my bike going through and/or let's say PD or some metro that are Russian somewhere that, you know, shows Spike and, hey, somebody's just zipped by at fifty-five miles an hour, but the camera didn't know they had red and blue lights on, so. But I'm, I'm sure it's just so infrequent, but I just, you know, it's just part of the data there.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at it as a percentage of all the vehicles that are going through there, yeah, I mean, a, a police squad car, yeah, I mean, it'd be minimal, it might show up as the fastest car in that, in that day or that area, but.
Based on this data, there were two and they didn't go over seventy, so they were doing okay.
Do you, do you have the data for the one on Bowles?
No, so that one does not, as far as I understand, that one does not collect.
That one we need to collect data.
Okay, yeah, so that's an older one that does not.
Jim can attest to that.
Yeah, that's kind of the next step is to take existing ones and upgrade them to the newer ones that can collect the data as well.
Oh, mine again, alright. So, yeah, so one of the things that, in, back in the February meeting is that, you know, we kind of, we didn't talk a lot about the Transportation Mobility Board in February, but one of the things we said is, you know, we wanna follow council's directive and kind of the board's interest on how they're involved in all of this safer streets stuff. So, that's what I'll kinda talk about next. So if we could actually skip one and then we'll come back to this. So the way that this has played out really in the Transportation and Mobility Board has been with looking at, at the idea of Vision Zero, right? What is Vision Zero? Is Vision Zero right for Littleton? Will it help address all these things that we've been talking about as a group? And so for those of you who don't know, Vision Zero at its core is really just a way to flip it at traffic and transportation planning. And so, that, you know, the Vision Zero community would say that kind of the old way is that injury crashes and where people get killed, they don't happen very often and we just kinda have to accept it, but really, the, the purpose of traffic and transportation planning is to move cars and make things efficient. So Vision Zero tries to flip that paradigm on its head and say, actually, you know, our biggest priority is safety and if we can make an improvement when it comes to operations, then great, but operations and capacity are not our primary, the primary thing that we're looking to plan after. So in this little graphic on the side, we had kind of a, a meeting with the, the TMB last month and one of the members asked like, well, we've heard all these terms, like, how does it fit in? And so here's probably some terms that you've heard when it comes to transportation safety. But really the thing to take away from this is that Vision Zero is the overall goal, right? It is to get the number of injury crashes and crashes where people die down to the number zero. So, if there's any questions, there, I'll pause, but I think, I think it's enough of a, yeah, buzzword that we all know. Okay, so if we go back a slide, and so here's kind of an overview of what the, the TMB has been doing really for the first half of the year. So in 2024, staff reached out to some peer cities and said, okay, you know, you guys have this reputation, you have high rankings when it comes to advocacy organizations. What have you guys done to improve your bike and pet infrastructure? So we reached out to them and kinda used that as a model for like, okay, what can Littleton do knowing that these cities are about the same size as, as Littleton? In March, we kinda looked at Vision Zero specifically and dug in and kinda did the history and what does it mean and how do you approach it and things like that. In April, actually, the board members reached out to Vision Zero cities and did their own research. If I could pause there, I'd say that, that the Transportation Mobility Board has really hit its stride. You know, they've been around for going on their sixth year, but this is the first time I feel like the board has hit its stride. And I think it's, there's two primary factors. One is dedicated members of the board. I think, you know, when we first started the board, board members, not these board members, other board members wouldn't show up and it was very, they wouldn't communicate and all the time I have board members emailing me, hey, did you see this? Did you see that? I also think that, you know, to Robert's credit, this is the first time we've had a council liaison that has really made the board feel like they are heard and they have a connection to council and so it makes them feel like they have purpose, so.
Good job, Robert.
I really do appreciate that.
Yeah, and so, sorry, yeah, so to pick back up, so the, the board members, they went out and they researched their own cities. We kinda suggested some cities from the Vision Zero network, some that were local, some that had similar sizes, some that had similar population densities. And they came back and they gave a report to staff and it was, it was great to kinda learn from all these cities and, and hear their experiences. And this upcoming month, so Emily Kleinfeldter, who was mentioned earlier, she was the, the Regional Safety and Vision Zero Planner for Dr. Cog. We've always had the plan to have her come and present to, to the TMB in June to discuss.
How do you have her more present?
Yeah, it'll be easier now, that's for sure. So she's gonna come present what's going on from a regional level, you know, what is Dr. Cog doing, what are other jurisdictions doing? And how does that impact Littleton? And in June, the board will start kind of forming a recommendation to council. You know, learning all this stuff about, about Vision Zero, how does Littleton take that on? Is it Vision Zero specifically? Do we take them, some things from Vision Zero? What are the lessons learned that maybe we can, you know, be better than the cities that have tried it and not done so well? So, in July, they'll finalize those recommendations and the ideas that August thirteenth, we'll have a joint study session here. You're gonna see me twice in August, sorry. And, and they'll, they'll make a recommendation for what, you know, what, what Littleton might move forward with when it comes to bike and pet safety and Vision Zero, so. Yeah, and I kinda just covered this, but that's, that's what they'll be, they'll be covering in the, the August joint meeting. So they'll kinda cover some of the stuff they've been learning, what's happening at the regional level and then they'll have a recommendation, so.
So I'm up. I paid attention.
Tie it all together.
So, next step is really budget and personnel requests coming up in the future, so. Really will be.
Did say future.
Yeah, the future, yeah. I mean, we'll be having, in 2025, we'll have some short-term stuff as far as safer streets, Littleton initiative, but really it's, it's kinda long-term budgeting for all of these different initiatives. Like, you know, our traffic calming program, our budget's currently twenty-five thousand, so, you know, we probably want to ask for an increase in that. We wanna evaluate personnel that we're gonna need in our operations division. We also wanna evaluate, you know, how do we plow and sweep these new bike lanes that we put, put in? And how does that affect our staffing? And of course, implementation funding for, you know, we're doing all these evaluations for the traffic calming and the school zone safety, so you know, the projects that come out of that, we're gonna need funding for. And then also the pilot projects that are successful. Aaron had talked about this a little bit, about turning them into permanent infrastructure, so we'll also need funding for that. And any projects that come out of the corridor study recommendations. And then we'll also need to, you know, just evaluate what we're gonna need for maintenance in the future. And so here's a look at the timeline again. I don't think I'm gonna go through this in much detail. I think the, the traffic team did a really good job of highlighting all the stuff that's going on. Really for City Council, looks like we'll be coming back in October to give you another update on the safer streets initiatives. And really, we'll be continuing to work with the school district to put in those improvements. And like I just talked about in the previous slide, we really need to identify resources and, you know, future budget needs.
Well, great, thanks. I'll thank, well, that's it.
You guys are done.
I can go back to the.
Well, there's a video.
No, I just wanna say, uh.
Thank you, that was very informative. There's a lot of, a lot of work in there and I know what it feels like, especially this last year here with council kind of giving you new priorities and directions and always saying, you know, we want you to do more and do it faster and do it now. And kinda like, yeah, we take some time and I think it's shown that you guys have really been putting in the work, so I really appreciate that. And I think that's a lot of good things are coming out there. I want, thank the Transportation Mobility Board as well for putting in the effort with that, so.
Does council have any other questions or comments?
Refresh my memory, maybe it's a question for Jim. Where did the funding come for doing all these things? Was it already, did you have it or did we, can't remember?
Tiffany got very creative.
The two-point-three million dollar appropriation came from three A. And council appropriated additional, that additional funding in March.
But I can see that going down to a certain extent, you know, after you get your signs up, after you do all the painting, after you get the bike lanes in, I mean, I can't, I mean, it's done, right? I mean, obviously there's maintenance to keep it up, but I can see that.
I think, if I may, Mayor, just, I think what a lot of this work shows is that especially as we get into the corridor study, you know, especially as we get into making pilot projects permanent, there will be ongoing costs. And I think the direction council has set is for a much higher ongoing level for bike and, bike and pet safety.
Well, I think, right over there, I think the chief and getting our police department out there and, and and at some point, I think I'm gonna advocate for cameras back in Littleton, especially on Bowles there. It's really becoming pretty crazy going down that road.
I mean, I do think.
I feel like you've already advocated for it.
Part of it, yeah.
We can keep advocating.
I mean, speaking of, I mean, we've all heard of cameras in the news recently here specifically with our, you know, friendly neighbor up at the two eighty-five. Is there, what other, look at the attorney, what other things would be needed to get some of those cameras to? Because I know they, I mean, Morrison has said they've seen speeds reduced when those cameras have gone up after a few weeks there.
I think some of the logistics we would need to figure out would be how we would go about serving those summonses on people or citations. So there would certainly need to be some research. We would probably wanna contract out and split some portion of the revenues generated by, by these speeding assessments with them. My understanding is it's kind of challenging finding a company to come in and do it on a limited basis without knowing exactly what the return might be. So certainly there might be some ordinance changes and some things that we would have to look at.
I don't know if the chief has a comment on cameras for speed enforcement?
Reed, we'd have to research the options available and I know there's some jurisdictions in the metropolitan area that are using them. We could incorporate that into our research and, and see what the positives and negatives are.
I feel like Pat has very effectively advocated for cameras on Bowles. Are there other places that we are considering them? I mean, I mean, the royalty, I feel like.
Not at this point. Consider any specifics.
And you, I think you feel like you've made a really good case.
Yeah, I mean, we just have a lot of kids crossing that, that intersection there from the south side of Bowles over to the north side to get over to Goddard or Centennial or wherever, so it's just.
If you capture somebody, is that enforceable?
Capture.
I mean, on camera?
Yeah, we would have to probably go through a civil citation process.
Okay.
It's how we would have to go into the ordinance, I mean, some of our visions.
I mean, I'm not against cameras, but I think this, the, the funding for this, I think it's more of a, like you said, a paradigm shift, not just a one-time investment and we're gonna go back down, I think, at least in my view, continue.
No, I'd be advocating for, you know, just a, a warning, a letter, once, twice, and then, you know, I mean, a lot of these people are coming from, you know, obviously from Kent Carroll or from, from Lakewood, you know, so a lot of them, they are not Littleton citizens.
I wanna know why Shane has signs you didn't share with us.
Of what?
What are these signs?
Those are the signs.
Clearly was. Brought them all the way.
You also have bike lights, wait.
So, you, these have started going up, these started getting installed at the end of May and they'll be going up through June. And so this was part of that grant that we mentioned where the seventy-five thousand dollars was the match. And so this is just one of the things where three big outcomes from that project, but one of them is a school wayfinding system. And so, along school routes will have these kind of on the top of street signs to alert, to help people find their way, but also to alert drivers to the fact that they're on the school route.
Do schools communicate with parents about, this is what we think the most ideal path is, or?
So, yeah, so the, the routes are based on our, our safe routes to school, so.
We have routes.
Yeah, so, so LPS designated safe routes to school years and years ago. When we did this project, there's a whole backstory to this, so I'll try to keep it short, but we got the grant back in 2020 and we had a consultant come in and reevaluate the designated school routes in our city and so that's where the signs are being placed, so.
I saw that on the city social media.
I did too, yeah.
I've been seeing them, yeah.
You might turn that to the audience or.
Yeah, and we've had some feedback come, come in, some good, some, you know, constructive feedback. But, and so part of it is, so we, there was a snafu with funding and C-Dot was nice enough to re, give us our funding, give us the funding back. But with the timeline, we need to get everything installed in July, so we wanna get everything installed. And if there's a few issues, we'll come back, you know, after we have that money spent and fix them. But it's not that we're not tracking those, but right now our goal is to, you know, is to get the grant funding spent so that we don't, we don't lose it, so.
Do we make these signs in our sign shop?
So that's, that's the second great outcome of this project is that trying to be forward-thinking. Before this project, signs like this, our sign shop would have to contract out and they would cost, I don't know, about a hundred bucks a sign, which doesn't seem like a lot until you're putting up a bunch. So as part of the grant, we got a printer that's actually capable of producing these signs as well as I believe the, the nice Littleton signs that we were contracting out too. So, part of the grant was upgrading equipment in the sign shop to be a little more efficient and better stewards of the, the grant things that we've produced, so.
It would be a benefit beyond those specific signs.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Yeah, the, the printer we got can use a specific MUTCD color so that we're compliant as well. So we can do lots of different signs around the city.
Besides funding, what's the biggest hurdle or issue you guys are seeing?
Staffing and maintenance. You know, as we move forward, especially with putting in protective bicycle lanes.
It's straight by funding.
You know, it's, it's gonna be new for us and for our operations crews to, to figure out how to keep these bicycle lanes clear and stuff and plowed. We want them to be usable all year round, so that's gonna be quite the effort. So, until we really get into that and start realizing how long it takes, how much time and, and energy, we won't know if we have enough staff or not available, so it'll be a learning experience for all of us. But we're eager to start that going. I mean, this is a really exciting time, I feel like. You know, just in my tenure here for the last eight and a half years, I feel like a lot has changed. And a lot of that comes back to, you know, who's sitting in front of us right now. We have a very supportive city council and we really appreciate that, that you guys have taken on that safety and mobility is really a focus for the city. So, couldn't do it without you guys for sure.
Thanks.
Great, thanks.
I'll be at the first meet and greet with a flashing bike sign, it's purple.
I'll, I'll just give a, a quick plug. I think it'd be great if staff, I know a few people have joined the Littleton Social Cycle Rides to get out there and help spread the word, build some more ambassadors for that. The next one's on Thursday, Ju- June twentieth at six P M. And there's a Sunday one at ten thirty, uh, Sunday the thirtieth at ten thirty. So it'd be great to, to get out there, so.
Our new transportation planner, Emily, has already been in contact with them and she is eager to join them on a ride and, and stuff for sure, so. Yeah, she's very excited about becoming an active participant and, and hearing the issues and seeing what they see out in the.
Yeah, which is, which is important.
Yep.
Great. Anything else, council?
Mayor Proton?
I was about to soapbox for a longer-term issue of, of planning around this infrastructure and the construction and implementation. I just wanted to put it out there that even the numbers that we're talking about for the conceptual designs that move on to final designs, that then move on to construction funding, we're talking increasing orders of magnitude, kind of the likes of which we have not, we, we, we have not fully embraced as, as a city. And there will come a point, and it's likely going to be as we see the culmination of this evidence starting to build, as the solutions are starting to take shape, how we want to actually go about solving this, that we are going to be confronted with a challenge very similar to the roadway improvement challenges that had basically a five-to-eight-year lead time of investigation, planning, conceptual designs and seeking funding, acquiring funding, and we can't federal grant our way out of it. Quite frankly, like the, the magnitude, the order of magnitude of money that we're talking about and the timelines that we want to achieve these things, there is no way that we can even get to the cost matching of federal granting our way out of it. And that is going to be maybe not a subject we bring up this year, but as we come closer to the realization of what scale of figure we're talking about and the hundred, like topping nine figures worth of money, that's something we'll have to reckon with for a five-to-ten-year implementation timeline. And I would highly suggest that we all start embracing the fact that, I mean, honestly, this is kind of one of my prouder times of being on. I mean, honestly, this is kind of one of my prouder times of being on, being in public service, is getting this ball rolling. But it's our job as council to be three steps ahead of you, beyond the next phase of engineering design. You know, we need to be saying, what is what is that final plan to get us on a sustainable track of funding? Because we won't get there unless we start it now. So honestly, like, this is a huge amount of work y'all are putting into it. Like, I couldn't be more proud to be serving the city with fine folks like yourself, truly. But we got a lot of work to do.
And I think really those corridor studies will really start to show the long-term needs and opportunities, so you're right, counsel.
Well, council has anything else? Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Spent another Tuesday night with us. So before we get to manager report, I just wanted to ask you one thing, just publicly with council here with connection with South Suburban, our our and trails specifically, and get to some of the maintenance, because they've been going on for a couple of days, and the weeds are taking over parks.
I heard that about Slatterhouse Gulch, and I wasn't sure if we manage that, or can we work towards that actually as South Suburban?
Slatterhouse Gulch.
Hey, guys, we're still talking here, so if you guys keep smiling.
Slatterhouse Gulch is South Suburban.
I I talked to Rob about maintenance, Rob, Rob Hanna, executive director about a week ago, just about their their general maintenance and, you know, expressed that we need to have more of that.
Yeah.
Because there are some areas, I I mentioned some that I've I've heard, and, you know, they are now's the, you know, time of year where it's accelerated, and that's what that's what's happening, so. It's certainly on the radar, and some of our some of our specific needs are.
Yeah, for sure.
Jim, when is the last time we did like a community volunteer cleanup? Not South Flat, but like one where we went into those areas.
I'm not aware of one in the last two years.
Is that something an individual council member could organize in spirit?
Yeah, we could, we could support that if if that's something that the council would like to look into.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's.
If you community cleanup, pick a area, pick a man.
Get bad.
Which which area you come up?
'Tis the season.
Yeah.
I'm talking Stern Park, the Community Trail, I mean, the War Memorial Rose Garden. Looks like it hasn't been touched in years, it's just covered in grass and weeds all over everything, and people are emailing me, just, I mean, places that I've been too, I was like, you know, I mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, I'm like, this needs to get out, we need to get more.
And we need.
It looks, nothing's been done, so.
We need to kill some Japanese beetles around the War Memorial.
They're not even out yet, that's not.
They do, but they're gonna be, that's the ugliest part.
They're a box.
And we, I mean, this is some, we can't wait till, like, root for this and stuff, this is, we're in the middle of summer right now, and it's looking like. Anyways, update and report for us, Mr.?
Sure, thanks. Just two quick things. Council's certainly aware that we've been working with the Meadowwood community on their offer to purchase their their property. We'd be more just waiting to kind of hear official updates, and I think the the word for for tonight is that we have not heard of an officially accepted offer. We know that the Meadowwood community made an offer last week, so there's been just a lot of kind of stop-and-go type information, and we're on on ready alert to to help when the word comes. Second thing, we do, just for the council and for the public, our next council meeting isn't scheduled until July sixteenth, so that's a four-and-a-half-week break, and since I know I've had some questions about how that came to be, next week is the Colorado Municipal League Conference. The following week, there were several vacations taking shape. Following week would have been the, I think, the the third of July, so there was some council availability question there, and and then as we 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 looked, we really saw that that July sixteenth was the right date to, where we have our 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 council and staff back, so that's how, that is how that that happened, so. I hope that we all can can take some time and come back. We've got a very full agenda for the rest of the summer and the fall, so hit it in a few weeks, that's all I have.
Just looking forward to breathing for a few weeks if I come. Hey, do this, good. No, that didn't cross your mind, did it? City Attorney?
Uh, Happy Father's Day to everyone on the Sunday.
Great, and we can look forward to your, you know, Around the Law with Reed here, videos.
Doug and I, we're gonna have to get to work on.
Break break into law in Littleton is what I wanted to.
Break into law? All right, Edward Turner.